All right, let's see nine board members. We have a very full agenda this evening, so let's go ahead and call the roll.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes, here.
Mr. West?
Present.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Oats?
Present.
Ms. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
And Mr. Heil?
Here. Board members would now look for a motion to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Ms. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
And Mr. Heil?
Yes, before we get to tonight's presentation of the revised master plan recommendations, we do have two items of business. Mr. Tunis, I believe both of those are yours.
Thank you, Ms. Heil, members of the board. Again, I'd like to, Tom, would you go ahead and put that first one up just to remind the board at our, excuse me, at our business meeting on the 24th, there'll be at least two items, maybe three, depending upon the outcome. Our budget amendment, number one, which is something that we do annually, will be presented. We provided information to the board in a previous Friday packet. Also Midland wrecking, that is the item that was removed from our agenda last board meeting. And then depending upon our conversation this evening and any future direction, we'll make a determination as to whether or not the master plan would reappear on that agenda next week. So I just wanted to provide that information to the board so you're aware of what's coming. The other item that I would like to draw your attention to, we did want to focus a little bit on our science update about a month ago. We had a lengthy discussion regarding our science performance and there were, we had questions and concerns and the board certainly wanted to and needs to stay a part of the monitoring of our progress towards science. Because we'll want to devote as much time as we can to the master plan, we have provided that information for you. It's at your desk and would be more than happy to respond to any questions that you might have and certainly will be in a position to provide additional information as requested. The other item that I'd like to bring your attention to, and you probably already have, but I'd like Tanya Gilbert to come forward and to let the board know in our community what we have in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Tunis. Good evening. I am extremely excited to stand before you and announce some rather good news for the Kansas City Public Schools. The gold footballs that you see before you were delivered from the NFL last week to Kansas City Public Schools. We, as you can count, have three golden footballs and we are a part of the high school honors program sponsored by the NFL. And this is a program where they, in honor of the 50th Super Bowl, delivered gold footballs to all of the high schools in which there was a player that played in a Super Bowl. And so the one that is to my far right, to the board's left, is for Bud Abel. He played in Super Bowl I and he graduated from Southeast High School. And you may remember him, he was also, played for the Kansas City Chiefs. And so the ball to my left, your right, is for Greg Westbrook. He is a graduate of Lincoln College Preparatory Academy. And the ball in the middle is none other than Mr. Mike Jones, who played in Super Bowl XXXIV and is a graduate of Southwest High School. And so the public relations department is in the midst of trying to gather these gentlemen together and will be making a presentation to those schools. It also provides us with the opportunity to apply for a grant from the NFL. And so Lincoln has proudly had a really nice session last Friday, which we covered, and so we will be continuing to do the same thing. One of the things that's been suggested for the ball from Southeast is to actually have it travel to the different elementary schools that feeds into Southeast to encourage those younger students to get ready for sports. And so, Mr. Tunis, those are the golden footballs.
Thank you. And we certainly appreciate, I think as Dr. Gilbert mentioned, there are grant funds available. The NFL has been supportive of Kansas City Public Schools. We had a $200,000 grant at AC Prep Upper, the field there, and also the new field that we're bidding over at Northeast, High Northeast High School. NFL's been a part of providing a grant to provide greater opportunities for members of our community and certainly our youth as it relates to development of a field. So, thank you, Dr. Gilbert, for presenting those. They'll be returned back to their respective school where they'll be proudly displayed. Thank you. I'd like to devote really the remainder of our time this evening to, wait, we might I keep looking at Greg Westbrook every time I pull that down, so. I'd like to devote most of our time this evening to a report to the board regarding our master plan. As you are aware, and the administration presented information to the board at the first board meeting in November, I believe it was November 2nd or 3rd, and we presented a series of recommendations to the board. And with that, which has been some, close to three and a half months ago, when that information was provided, since that time, the administration has taken that recommendation, the background information, the supportive information that built upon those recommendations to our community to gain additional feedback through a whole series of community engagement sessions. And we'll talk a little bit about what those engagement sessions were like, the kind of feedback that we received. And the presentation this evening is really divided into two parts. The first part of the presentation will be reporting to the board in a very transparent way what we've heard from the community in the meetings that were conducted, what we heard, and giving the board an overview to that. The second half of the presentation will then focus on a revised recommendation to the master plan based upon what we heard. And so with that, there's a whole group of us that will be making presentation and providing information to the board this evening. And when I, I think a good time to break for questions will be between what we've heard and what we did about it. So you'll see when that time will come and we'll break and have that opportunity for questions and then we'll continue on with the revised recommendations. I will tell you that I'm very pleased with the engagement that took place. I think that not just from the, what the administration, each of our schools, certainly our partners, our community, our parents, the number of meetings that existed, we saw a lot of people at more than one meeting, providing opportunities, providing input and giving us the feedback that we were seeking. I had an interesting meeting earlier in the day today and a question was, well, was it worth the additional three months from the original recommendation to the revised recommendation? And I think the answer was absolutely it was. And we'll be able to show you that when we show you the differences between what was originally recommended and how we modified that. So with that, I'm going to ask Shannon Jacks to come forward. A number of members of our administrative staff will take a spot and be able to make their presentation to the board. Shannon?
Good evening. So we've got two slides that we want to share with you that summarize our outreach efforts. The first slide quantifies our outreach since we were last here with draft recommendations in November. So we've held almost 40 meetings since that point in time with parents, students, school staff, stakeholder groups, and we've received more than 1,300 survey responses. And a summary of the survey responses you can find in your supplemental binder under the red tab. And of course, we also want to show the outreach effort that we've done since we started this in September of 2013. We knew we'd been out there pounding the pavement, but I don't think we realized just how much until Nicole summarized all the numbers for us. So 116 total meetings, more than 2,000 meeting participants, 4,000 surveys, 1,600 texted, text is in, so text-based participants. And I personally want to thank all the school staff, parents, community members who came out, shared their feedback. I know people are often apprehensive about whether or not we listen, so I appreciate their time. But I also want to thank the team who helped put this together because not only is this a major endeavor, but it also, it's a lot of, it's a lot to digest and requires a willingness not only to receive criticism, but also to be open to change. And I think what you're going to see tonight are improvements. That feedback has made this plan recommendation better. So we want to go next into highlighting some of the feedback that we have heard since those draft recommendations were made in November. So we're going to start with academics and a few key things that we've heard. One, people wanted more specificity around the recommendations, specifically the year-round schools and the pathways at the high schools. Family also wanted to know, aside from the elementary schools that are candidates for year-round school, what is going to be improved at the other schools? So making sure there's that equity and improvements across the board. We also heard continued support for expanding electives. I think one thing that we heard from, I think almost, if not every one of our student councils, almost, that they want more coursework that better prepares them for college and the workforce. They want to be challenged. And we also heard a desire for smaller class size. No surprise, we've continued to hear support for expanding and improving our extracurricular and co-curricular activities. So on this next slide, this is a Wordle, and it summarizes the key feedback. So what was said most from the 600-plus surveys who typed in or answered, wrote in their responses to the question of what extra and co-curricular activities would you like to see offered or enhanced at our middle schools and our high schools? And you'll see on here, there's things like basketball and soccer that we already offer, so there's opportunity to make those programs more robust. But you also see that there's things like ROTC and dance that we don't offer at all of our schools. So opportunities to expand and improve. Almost 90% of our survey participants supported expanding and improving our transportation services. This was like a no-brainer. If you're like, yes, please do this. But we also received some questions about how we could go even further. So could we improve the service level of our activity buses? Regarding our feeder systems, we received strong interest in reestablishing feeder systems. So students from the same neighborhood elementary schools, matriculating together to the middle schools and onto high school, a lot of interest in that. Now around the attendance boundaries, obviously there's some families that don't want their assigned school to change, and we expected to hear that. But we did hear that people were pleased that with all the boundary changers, changes and proposed closures that were limiting the students that are impacted to just 15% of all of our students. We also received positive feedback that the new boundaries get students closer to their schools, closer to where they live, keeping neighborhoods together, and also that the boundaries are bridging the truce divide, especially at the high school level. So next we want to share some feedback around the school closure recommendations. Obviously, the toughest part of the recommendations that we would all like to avoid if possible. And we characterize the feedback that we received as mixed. During our meetings, we feel that there was an acknowledgement that we needed to do closures, but obviously no one wants it to be their school to be closed. Now, when we dug down into the survey data, there were some obvious trends. So there was statistically significant differences in the responses based on whether or not a respondent attended a master plan meeting or not. So those who attended and got to hear about the full recommendations and why we were proposing what we were and what those recommendations were, those folks were twice as likely to support school closures as those who did not attend a meeting. In addition, the results also vary greatly by whether or not your school would be impacted by closures. So 49% of the respondents from schools that would be affected by closures, you know, didn't support the recommendations, they didn't want closures versus 26% of those who weren't affected. So we just thought it was important to highlight those differences. We also heard some feedback around some confusion that if we closed schools, it meant that the receiving schools would be overcrowded or that class size would increase. So those are things that we've been out talking with folks, we've tried to clarify. We also want to give you specific information around the feedback that we got on the specific school closure recommendations. Addicts feelings that we got were, or feedback that we got, questions about why this was recommended because the building is in better condition and has a better layout than nearby schools, that Addicts has better accessibility for parents than other schools nearby because of the high service level of the Prospect Bus Line, that the community didn't want us to close a school on Prospect when there's significant development activity taking place in that area. And we also heard that the autism program is very well-integrated into the current school and there was a concern about moving those students to a new school. So community members asked us to reevaluate those elementary recommendations, and some suggested that we look at closing Wendell Phillips School because it is in the same neighborhood as Addicts. And so we went out and talked with the school staff and parents and stakeholders at Wendell Phillips.
January?
Late January?
Late January.
In late January, to get their feedback as well.
Late January.
Yes. Late January. And they raised concerns that the school is fully accredited and that we could lose Wendell Phillips test scores if the school were to be closed. People also pointed, sorry, I wanted to make sure I was on the right slide. So people also pointed out the really strong school culture that we have at Wendell Phillips and the really strong community partnerships and volunteers that are active in the building. If we move on to high school feedback, some of the concerns that we heard around the potential closure of SWECC. Primarily, a lot of the feedback was around all of our high schools, if it were closed, would be located east of Truist and that would be, we would be less likely to attract families from the southwest corridor to a school at AC Prep versus a school at SWECC. With each of the schools, you've probably seen the last bullet, feeling that that location is safer, we heard that at Phillips, we heard it at Addicts, we've heard it at SWECC. People are comfortable where they are. So we conversely also heard a lot of support around locating the neighborhood high school south of Brush Creek, close to where our students live, and also because the Southeast campus has significantly better campus facilities than what we currently have at Southwest. So over the last few months, we've met with families, students and staff at both Southwest and AC Prep, and while students and parents reiterated that they want more options, more electives, more enhanced activities, we also heard some concerns about a potential merger. So the idea of merging a neighborhood school with a signature school that currently has entrance requirements, how would that work? Can we pull it off? We also heard that the African-centered program needs to be looked at as more than just a pathway, more than just a series of electives. It's a school culture that we have to think about. And there were also concerns about rivalries at the high schools. So many of these comments, we felt, were influenced based off of our past transgressions, things that we have not done as well as we should have. And so we heard a lot of questions about, do we have time to implement this correctly? How are we going to do this? Can we do it well? What's going to be done to welcome students and parents to a new school? What's going to be done to prepare staff and buildings for new students that will be coming? And what needs to be done to ensure that we don't lose more families to charter schools because of these changes? So in all, we received a lot of feedback, and you'll see that under your red tab. There's a summary of the meeting minutes from the school meetings, the public meetings, the student meetings. And so we've spent the last three months not only listening, but reevaluating our draft recommendations and assessing, what do we need to do to make this better, to try to address these things that we're hearing from the community? And so that's where we'll focus the rest of the presentation, and I'm going to turn things over to the academic team and they're going to kick us off.
And before you do that, before you do that, I think this is a good opportunity to take a break and try to clarify any of the, excuse me, comments that were made regarding the input we heard and what we saw from all of our meetings, community meetings.
All right, Ms. Robinson, we'll start with you.
Can you give a little bit more context of the school closures in that specific area? And so which schools were we considering? We talked about Wendell Phillips, we talked about Addicts, but can you talk about all of the schools within those boundary areas and how we got to where we are right now?
Sure. I will. I just wasn't sure if we were going to answer all questions or about feedback, because we are addressing it, address some of it later in the presentation.
I think that if it's acceptable and part of that is built into the recommendation, it'll come as part of that second part, but I think if we can answer, yeah, I think.
And we'll get to, I just, I don't want to end up repeating ourselves. So we did receive feedback, should we look at several of the schools in that area? So Wendell Phillips came up because it's located within the Wendell Phillips neighborhood. Addicts and Wendell Phillips are both in the same neighborhood boundaries, at separate ends, one's on the west side, one's on the east side of Wendell Phillips neighborhood. Wheatley is also very close to the school, so people asked us to look at that. Faxon is a small school nearby, Longfellow is a small school nearby. So those were all that we looked at in our overall assessment. And maybe when we get to the later part of the presentation, we can go into the specifics. Would that be okay? Mm-hmm. Would that be okay?
Well, I'm kind of jumping ahead because I'm really interested in looking at all this data that was compiled. I moved ahead to when you were talking about the movement of the students, and I'm trying to look to see if you had updated the movement of the children at Phillips or Addicts. And I definitely want to get to, it's kind of piggybacking Ms. Robinson's question, and I haven't seen, then, when you're talking about the boundaries, I guess if we could get this page updated, because it doesn't look like it is, because it's still saying 208 kids are still going to be at Phillips, and a couple of other numbers of different other schools, when, if there is a boundary change, what other schools, like Longfellow, King, Melcher, Truist, these kids are going to go to? So just kind of jumping ahead, looking at these numbers, if you can answer that later.
I was going to have Jesse come up, but I can actually answer that.
Yeah, later on in that part, because I'm looking at this and it doesn't look like it's been updated.
There is not a proposed boundary change. So because Wendell Phillips and Addicts are in the same neighborhood boundary, the recommendation for, the change in recommendation or consideration of recommendation for school closure doesn't need to change. Now, there are minor change because you have Addicts, or Addicts autism students that would remain, but we can go into those specifics when we begin into boundaries.
All right, so we're going to talk about the substance of the recommendation later right now, we'll just talk about the process. All right, so as I look at our board policy, I just want to make sure that we've gone through the necessary steps that the board's identified. So among the meetings that you held, one of the things that Board Policy 4.1 requires is that there be a parent leadership organization at our schools. Have you, did the meetings that you hold engage the parent leadership at each of the
So we worked with our school leaders and reached out to, to parent leaders as well where we knew, you know, who they were. One of the, one of the sources that was very valuable is that the DAC has been really working hard to reengage parent leaders at each of the buildings, and so we've used a lot of the information that they've had to reach out to families as well. But obviously, there's some concerns that we didn't do that based on what I'm hearing behind me, but.
Okay, the, you know, one of the other expectations here is that you, so that's about parent leadership. Another one of the subcomponents of 4.1 just speaks about an obligation of the administration to meet and confer with families at any school where there's going to be a significant, you know, change to educational experience or reallocation of KCP's resources. So the first question was about the parent leadership groups. This question is about families in general. As part of the meetings that you all have undertaken, have you engaged with families at each of the impacted sites? And then finally, when we talk about treatment of staff, when we get to Board Policy 4.2, it talks about treatment that we, you know, don't leave them, you know, uninformed. As part of the meetings that you had, did you have meetings with staff at the impacted sites?
Yes.
I just have some questions in terms of our numbers. I went back to try to look at just the percentage of participation of persons in our meetings. And let me see if I get my pages right. I think on the first page, page three, from our meetings from November 15th to February 16th, we said we had 832 people and the survey responses was 1,321. I just use the number of 14,888 as our enrollment. And so when I came up with those, I came up with less than 1% of persons that participated in those. I've been looking at our second page, I was able to come up with point one and point two, seven five. I'm a little bit concerned that, I'm glad that we did the outreach. I think it's, you know, wonderful that we do outreach, but when our numbers are so low in terms of our responses and then those numbers, I think of our students that are going to be impacted, you said it's less than 15%? That number's so much higher than what we're doing. And then when I went back and tried to look at our schools that are students and the demographics of those students, it was a little bit disconcerting that these seem to be predominantly African-American. I know our, I know our, our students are predominantly African-American, but I'm a little bit concerned where we do talk about maybe segregating out again. That's part of my question.
I'm not terribly great at math on the fly, but I think we're closer to 10%.
The, if we look at the November to February, the first, the slide on page three, if we're dealing with, if we're dealing with 1,400, excuse me, 14,800 students, then 1,480 recipients would be 10%. So the 1321 is probably, survey responses is probably 9% of that total enrollment. The, the number on page four, if, depending on which number we're talking about, if it's the total meeting participants, the 2,000, we're probably talking more like, I don't know, probably more like, you know, 12, 13%, something like that. Now, the only difference with that would be that some of the meeting participants in that number would also be students, we, because we've met with students as well. So they'd be included. So that, the 1,000 number would be higher, so that might lower the percent.
And I just want to make sure the second part of your question, Dr. Hartsfield, around the demographic makeup of the schools that are affected here and the consideration we need to make for, to, you know, to use your language, to kind of resegregating, that that's.
need to make for, you know, to use your language, kind of resegregating, that that's going to be addressed later in the presentation? Okay, is that, Mr. Robinson?
If we don't, remind us.
Getting parents to come out to participate in a process like this is an age-old problem. You know, I remember back during the day, when, if you got 20 parents to come out to a parent-teacher conference, you were doing pretty good. And there's something that you're never satisfied with. When you reflect back on the number of meetings that you've attempted to have with parents or had with parents, can you say that you were satisfied, and I know that's a kind of an unfair question, because I know you are always pushing to get more parents out, but can you say that you have done what you could to, for an outreach of getting parents to come to these meetings?
So we'd always want to have more participation, and I wish that we could have 10 of us that are working on this, you know, to be able to do more and more and more. I've personally never been involved with anything that is at this level, and I think it's something to be proud of. And yeah, we can always be better, but we should be proud of the outreach that we've done, and I, I don't want to minimize the feedback from the people that we've heard from, because they, they've shared some really important things with us that, you know, that I think have made this plan better. And we're not going to be done here. I mean, if this is approved, we still have a really important piece with the transition plan, and that will continue to engage our families. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, Mr. Tunes, I'm sorry, I was going to ask you if you would weigh in on that from your perspective also.
Sure. You know, I would, I look at that, and I think that, that we believe strongly that it takes a village to raise a child. I think that, I'm sure people that are even here in the auditorium this evening have, have devoted a lot of their volunteer time to partner in helping make this district what we're continuing to approve and eventually will become. We're working very hard to do that. When we developed and built the outreach, we did it in a way that would accommodate as many families as we possibly could. I will tell you that we had meetings of all different times, Saturdays, evenings, during the day. I sat at breakfast tables during the week with neighborhoods. We had, we met with students, we pulled them in, we served them pizza. We did all sorts of things that, that we could think of to try to increase that level of participation. I will tell you that I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish, but I would also tell you, we're not where we need to be in terms of our engagement and the involvement that we make. We're working very hard, even outside of the master plan, working with the DAC, the individual SACS, to gain increase in participation in areas outside of the master plan, but just in the development of what we need to do as a school district moving forward. And so from this perspective, I'm very proud and pleased with what we've been able to accomplish. Our work isn't finished, and we need to continue to work, and I think as Shannon has indicated, as we move forward with, regardless of what the outcome of the action of the board, community engagement is critical in the success of this community, and we need to continue to strive to do it any way we possibly can.
Yeah, I didn't ask this because I thought you already responded to it, but just for the sake of being thorough, Board Policy 4.1, in addition to referencing parent leadership organizations at each school, also references scholar leadership organizations at each school, and so just as a matter of being thorough, in the meetings that you all conducted, did you engage scholar leadership organizations at the impacted schools as well?
At all, at all the high schools, we did. And we engaged all the high schools, period. We did have some students who participated in our meetings at all levels.
We targeted the high school, every high school was represented, and we brought them together, as I indicated, served them pizza, sat down with lunch, went through the plan, went through, and some of the strategies that you'll see coming forward really came from the students as we built what we would need to do in order to build a strong transition.
Dr. Marillo?
Good evening. Our academic team is going to present now on some of the best parts, and that is academic proposals that we have. And we know in the fall, when we are in November, when we came together, we talked about first when we began to really dig into the master plan. We began to really look at the, really the underperforming schools is what we first focused on at the elementary level, and our high schools with the pathways, and then really strengthening the work at the middle school levels. So we talked about the year-round schools, and as we were out in the community engagement pieces, we really found that parents, and even staff, and our community, our parents, embraced the year-round school. They favored that. And in your packet, we did put a piece on the year-round school that Mr. Davis pulled together for us, but we know that would be moving that school from 174 days to about a 182, and increasing that extended year. And so we're looking at, at implementing that at Banneker in year one, and then rolling out two to three additional schools in year two. The school year would begin in the summer of 2017. So we would have a planning year in the fall to the summer, and we would begin our first year-round school in June of 2017. The other piece that we have is listening to the feedback and the recommendation. So as you see the blue print pop up, that is feedback that we received as we went out to talk about the plan with our community stakeholders. One of the stand, points that stood out a lot was reducing class size. And as we begin to look at that, reducing class size for K2 and that desired standard of 22, currently, we have 25 in our K2, we have 27 in our 3-4, and we have about, we can go up to 30 in 5-6. So one area that we had a lot of feedback around was reducing that class size, and that is our recommendation to begin that, reducing the K2, and then phasing in the desired standards for 3-4 and 5-6. We also continue to work on all K2 teachers would earn a reading certificate. In your package notebook, you will also find what that certification would take to achieve, the courses that we would need. Dr. Davis has been working with UMKC on cohorts, and we would roll that out through cohorts, five schools at a time, as we would begin to roll that out and complete the certification by 2022 of all of our K2 teachers. And last, that intermediate grade teachers, 3 through 6, would specialize in the content area. We know that is something that has a lot of research around and, but also has concerns around. And some of the concerns, you know, are around the transitions that would take place during the school day as students move from teacher to classroom teacher to classroom teacher, and also of the teachers getting comfortable in those content standards, because we know as they go through their elementary certification, they're taught all of the content areas and delivering that information, and sometimes, you know, to get that comfort level for our 3 through teachers. In there, you will also find in your book another piece that Dr. Davis pulled together for you that I thought was some fascinating studies, is there's 23 studies on research for reducing class size and improving student achievement. So we were really pleased to be able to provide you with that research. Dr. Davis is going to talk with you about improving the academic achievement at our middle schools. We know this is year two for our middle schools. We did a lot of professional development with our seventh-grade teachers, now we have our eighth-grade teachers there, and we want to continue to strengthen that middle year and ensure that our students enter high school ready to succeed.
Good evening. We know that in 2018, that there will be at least 1.2 million STEM jobs that are unfielded, and so one of the things that we're working to do is to make sure our middle school students are prepared to get these jobs. So we currently have gateway to technology through Project Lead the Way at our middle schools, and by adding the EL curriculum, which is English Language Arts, we'll create a project-based learning environment. So with our math and science teachers, you see, they'll be attending Project Lead the Way training over the summer, and this will help provide that rigor in instruction through their content and teaching math and science. And then by building this rigor, it'll also help our students become successful in STEM to be able to get into some of those high school programs, as you'll hear Mr. Davis talk about. One thing that we're looking at doing with our eighth graders right now in math is, our eighth graders that are taking Algebra I, giving them the opportunity to take Geometry A over the summer and take Geometry B online, so that they have more opportunities for those higher-level math courses. And so one of the pieces about the EL curriculum, which is English Language Arts, that it comes with for that professional development piece would be that you would see that the teachers are getting that job-embedded coaching, which is very important. The teachers get PD on curriculum and pedagogy, as well as classroom management, which we know is a need. And so a lot of this, what you'll see, I was looking at a unit from EL the other day, and one of the lessons that I thought, one of the modules I thought was really good is called Water is Life, which is very, it's a science piece, and so you can see where the teachers could get together, because our middle schools are in teams, and so there's a science teacher in one team, a math teacher in one team, an English teacher in one team, and a social studies teacher. So when you look at that, the relevance of where teachers could go with the discussion with Flint right now, which is really a big relevant issue, and it meets all of the standards that our students are currently covering, and so that they can look at that and they can incorporate their math, their science, their English, and their social studies. And so one of the pieces that the middle schools also have is an additional plan time, so that's where teachers have the time to really develop this rich, rigorous, project-based learning through the training they've had in EL, as well as Project Lead the Way. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Davis, he addresses the high schools.
Almost, Mr. Davis. One of the areas that we brought in the first recommendation was to look at our high schools and see how we can make, enhance them and make them more rigorous, relevant, and engaging for our high school students. And one of the concepts that we brought forth was the theme-based high schools, and we got a lot of feedback from the community, and a lot of the feedback really pushed us towards pathways. And so we began to look into pathways and what that looked like, and what kind of data was out there, that really began to look at the Kansas City area in particular, and the jobs that would be available for students. As we are growing our middle school students in the STEM, we need to have places to plug them in to those curriculum pieces as they get into the high schools. And so right there in front of you are just samples or examples that Mark has pulled out as college and career pathways. And as we look at some of those, when you look at the health science and the biomed, we know that that's principles of biomed science, the human body systems, the medical interventions, and their capstone is a biomed innovation. And so we began to create that pathway that provides that first course for their freshman year, sophomore year, junior, with a capstone, and their senior year. Each one of these pathways would have that course and that pathway, but that doesn't mean that that student doesn't get to take other electives. It doesn't mean that we take away foreign language, the dual-credit offerings, that we, PE, speech, debate, other offerings that we would have. It's part of the pathway of the interest of that student to get involved in those. If you look into the computer science, it would be Intro to Computer Science, and then Computer Science Principles, and then Cyber Security. Those are some of the pathway courses that you begin to scaffold up as you move into those pathways. To be able to develop this in that community, we talked about, for the first year, the school community would be Southeast High School. And to begin that, we would begin the pathway implementation in SY18, 17, fall of 17 to school year 2018, but the first year, it would be about having exploration-type electives in that building, because we know that to create the pathways and to do it right, we need to work with our students, our stakeholders, and our community. So in the first recommendation, we talked about opening in the fall with pathways in place, and as we've been able to talk with the stakeholders and really dig into the research and look at the capacity within the academic team, we know that we would need a planning year for our high school. And in doing that, we would then go ahead and move the students together into Southeast High School, and then really dig into what those options could be in electives, that would begin to, almost like the middle schools, the exploration and offering some biomed, computer science, Project Lead the Way, other electives. And then we know that currently at Southwest, we offer marketing, entrepreneur, and exploring computer science. At AC Prep Upper, we also offer those courses and Intro to Construction Technology. Next year, new courses that we'd like to offer at that building is the Introduction to the Teacher Cadet Program, Visual Communication, Pro Start, and then the Project Lead the Way Computer Science Pathway. And begin to allow that exploration and allow those students to begin to sign up and find out what the interests are of those students as it aligns to the data of the jobs coming forward. That's kind of a hands-on approach and get that real, real-time data, feedback from our students, from our teachers, from our administration, and from our parents as to how that engagement piece was around there as we plan what the pathways would look like, and then implement those pathways in the fall of 2017, 2018. Now, there's one other area at Southeast High School that we have to look at, and Mr. Davis is going to talk about our African-centered component.
Thank you, Dr. Marillo. Good evening, members of the board. When we came before you some months ago, our original recommendation was that we would co-locate the two southern high schools into one campus, and we would have that school operate as a neighborhood high school, and we were intending on keeping the African-centered component as a pathway, one of the pathways that Dr. Marillo just mentioned. However, after receiving the feedback from the community, and Shannon alluded to this earlier, is that the community really felt that we needed to do something stronger, we needed something more, because the African-centered component was viewed as more than just a set of elective courses. It was about that culture, it was about the relationships, the theme was, should be embedded through all of the coursework. So in response to the feedback, we have come back with a recommendation of having a school within a school model, or having a mini-school inside the larger school. What this model allows us to do is to still create the benefits that the larger school allows, which is greater efficiency, greater utilization, and also expanded co- and extracurricular activities, but also we are able to maintain the benefits of the smaller school, which is the enhanced student-to-staff relationships. It's the pride that goes along with being a part of a smaller school with a theme. And so with that, we did look at the feedback, feedback that you see in the blue, the community asked that we expand and continue to enhance the African-centered course offerings. And so just to let everyone know what we currently offer, and then also the discussions that have already taken place to engage the AC Prep community in expanding that. So currently, we offer African-American history, also the African-centered seminar class that all of the freshmen take, so that they have a true induction into the African-centered education component. We have African dance, we also have African drum. Next year, we are looking to expand those offerings into African art. I've already reached out to the Nelson Atkins Museum, we have a meeting set up with the curator over there, African art exhibit, along with his team, to form a partnership where we can continue to grow internships and shadowships with community partners, and then we're also, we're proud of the marching band that AC Prep has developed over the last three to five years. We want to continue to strengthen that. We're also looking at partnerships with the American Jazz Museum, I have a meeting set up with the education director there. We can expand the band capacity through the jazz influence, so we're looking at several partnerships that will continue to strengthen the already strong program there at AC Prep. So just want to come back to some of the benefits of a school within a school model that are above and beyond the pathway, so that we have a firm understanding of this true benefit for this model, is that the school will remain insulated from the rest of the larger school, so the students will... So the students will still continue to identify primarily with the mini-school or with the African-centered prep academy, and they'll have their unique teachers that are there with that expertise, but they also still have access to the greater facilities such as the cafeteria, obviously, the library, the nurse's office, and so forth. And then also, they still will enjoy the expanded offerings after school. So still have the larger football team, the additional extra and co-curricular activities that come along with the benefits of co-locating two programs. And so, we'll talk a little bit more about those extra and co-curricular activities here in just a little bit. And so, with that, we're looking at, through the recommendation, we would start the school, recommending that it starts in the fall, and we would also look at using the remainder this year for the transition plan.
And one other critical piece is, our African-centered school within a school would also have the opportunity to participate in any elective, additional electives or pathway if they would so choose to want to do that, knowing though that we want to have that rich piece that's with that school within a school. So this slide right here is, is something that we've added. One of the key points that we've heard through some feedback and as we've talked in cabinet and Mr. Tunis has talked with us, is about conducting an independent school evaluation of our schools. We know that our schools have made progress. We know that we have improved our school cultures, we are improving our academic practices, and we are working diligently to continue that. But one thing that we really believe we need is an external assessment of our schools. And we have done the RFP. We have quite a few organizations that have sent back kind of a plan that they'd like us to review. We'll be scoring that plan. But we want to make sure that we continue to move forward and upward and that we don't plateau, we don't stagnate, become stagnant, or we don't slide backwards, especially through this time of, if a master plan would be approved, we want to ensure that we develop a plan to support every building and to look at where they are and what resources we can provide them. We're very pleased with the progress we've made, but we know there's still more to do. And I think it would be very helpful for our district to have an external evaluator come in and look at every district and us lay down the findings that they have to the school improvement plans that's been written for those districts and to also evaluate our resources, our professional development, and the work that's being done. It will just assist us with that next level that we all desire to get to. And in that, that developing that strong culture has to stay centered and forward. And to improve the instructional classroom and management support for teachers. Dr. Davis does a really good job with that professional development, and we are looking to expand that this summer, especially working with new and beginning teachers. And then finally, is to, this was a big piece that we had overlooked when we began this process, and that was providing additional support and resources to schools receiving higher percentages of new students. We will have schools that will have 25% or more new students, and we need to ensure that we support those principals, teachers, and buildings with the resources and supports that they need to continue that success that they have at their building levels. So that's one of the areas that we have revised and will be able to provide for those buildings. Mr. Davis is going to close our presentation with talking about the co-curricular and extracurricular activities.
So rounding out a superior academic program with enhanced extra and co-curricular activities will bring greater benefits for the student's overall experience. At our last board meeting, we came before you with students who shared how important the extra and co-curricular offerings that they're currently in, how it impacts their school performance currently. Many reported having increased attendance, increased pride in their school, allowed for them to make additional friends because they're participating and competing for their school alongside of other students who share their same interests. And so, what we're looking to do with the increased savings is to make sure that we are not only increasing the amount of co- and extracurricular activities throughout our high schools, but that we're also improving the ones that we have. And so, many of the clubs that we currently have, Art Club, Chess Club, Community Service Clubs, ROTC, we have Robotics, Lego League, Math Club, we heard from some students last time about their Solar Car Club. Currently, these exist in pockets around the district, and so, we want to make sure that all high schools have access to these same clubs so that it's not just at one high school. We're also going to continue to improve and increase our activities at the middle school level and also at the elementary level. And so, in your packet behind the blue tab, you will find a survey that is being used. We're going to use it at the upcoming parent conference, and parents and students will be surveyed as to what are the additional co-curricular activities that they will want in the future. And so, we're looking at expanding our activities at the elementary level. We show some there on the screen. That comes as a result of the feedback that we heard from the community. We want to have activities for our elementary students as well, and so we're starting to do that through partnership. We'll be able to offer additional with the, with the savings. And so, we look forward to providing that greater service for our students and families as a result of the demand to increase those offerings. And next, we'll bring up Jesse Lang.
I think before we do that, while the academic team is standing there, this might be an opportunity to ask the board for any questions.
Yeah, we'll go and take our round of questions here, Mr. Evans. We'll start with you.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear more academics and more, not assessment, but I think, I think we probably assessed a little too much. But it's refreshing to hear us talk more about academic achievement. What's troubling for me is, I don't want us to talk about moving some of the students some of the time. I want to see us talk about moving all the students all the time. And what we do is, I think we, what's troubling because I hear a lot of bubbling going on, and I think all school districts do that, take a certain group of students, then move them up the ladder. And you, earlier you talked about science. I hope that we stay focused on science, but in the meantime, I also hope that we don't lose sight of the other areas and focus. Sometimes we move, we take science, for example, and we kind of forget about the other subject, that other subject matter. I hope we move all the students all the time. Thank you.
I have a question about a school within a school. More so a question about when the school within the school, it's similar like there's an inversion right now because the school that's existing is the African-centered school, correct?
Yes.
And if I'm understanding correctly, because I see here it says the name of the school to be designated, so then, what is the existing school right now will be the inner school? How do you think that's going to affect that, that culture and population?
So, if approved through the master plan, we are going to, as Shannon indicated earlier, going to undergo a massive engagement process with, and create a transition team that would include parents, staff from both programs, also obviously the leadership, definitely having many focus meetings, bringing those student councils together, those SACS together. And so, we would make sure that we have listened to all voices to have kids or students say, these are the types of activities that we think need to occur between now and the end of school so that we're not strangers with one another, that we, we've listed out all of the, the events that we believe need to happen in that first month of school, that first quarter, to make sure we've set a collaborative culture. Dr. Murillo indicated that there would be additional funds given to schools that are going to receive, you know, 25% or more students, and so, those additional resources would go toward whatever expenses would be needed for improving and creating that climate and culture so that there is, you know, we're one, one school, one body.
Okay, maybe I didn't put this quite correctly. I recall when, this was presented before, my question was, and we talked about feeder schools, and I looked at the feeder schools before, and I'm looking at them again for this community school now, Banneker, Hellcook, Hartman, and Truce. And my question was before, I did not really understand how, when I look at the demographics of Hellcook, right now, them seen as African-centered school as their high school of choice. And now, I'm very concerned that we're coming back and we are, it's like you're the owner of a house, and all of a sudden you're being relocated to a room of the house. African-centered was the school, and now they're going to be a part of something that's larger than them. We've looked at before, just merging. We're not talking about merging here. We're talking about subsuming something into another. What are your concerns? Do you, do you have concerns when you look at what we've done before, when we merge these groups of, these are not young children. These are our children in formative age, high school. Do you, do you see some challenges?
And Dr. Hartsfield, those are great, great comments and great concerns. We have concerns, and as we've looked at this, one thing that we're looking at in hope for the students at the African-centered, because we have about 376, and then we have six grade levels. So you're looking at about 60 students per grade level. And what we've been concerned about is those students have a rich experience in the high school. We would continue to grow the program through the AC Prep Elementary, which would then go from K6 to K7, then grow it to K8, with the resources that they would be, the additional resources for the students in that building, honoring the work and the theme that they currently are, but enhancing by providing them with opportunities to be a part of, with a school that's small, they are struggling to have athletics. They are struggling to have enough students to have multiple clubs after school. And then, because of the school being so small, the district is struggling with the resources to add a large number of electives. And so, what we're trying to do by bringing those together is, we still honor that theme. We still grow that theme, and we still ensure that that theme is valued, and we provide them the resources. But it also allows them also to be a part of clubs within their theme, but also the athletic program, and then the electives. If there is a pathway, if someone wants to be a part of that theme, but they are interested in engineering, they have options now versus I have to leave this school and go to manual if I want to be a part of a CTE program. And so, that's the piece that we're trying to bridge together. I am concerned about the bridge and how it's perceived and how the students feel because we want them to be a part of this, and we want them to help us as we help them, let us know how they're feeling. That's going to take time, and that's going to have to work through the transition. One year, I was asked to close a school and bring that school over to another school, and it was an elementary school, so it wasn't as dynamic as this. But what I was quickly told was, it was an us-them, and it was my job to make it an us-us. And so, we're going to have to do some things to be an us-us, and those children that are in the neighborhood with the pathway, they have to respect that African-centered school within that school. And then we support both, and that's the, that's the key that we have to be in. Now, we're moving less children than what was moved from Westport to Southwest. We are combining a smaller group, groups of students, but we've still got to do some really good things so that both student groups feel like this is their school, that they are a community, especially around the sports, and that's one key thing that should help us with that, besides the work we do on the front end of the parent engagement and the activity nights that we have planned in the transition plan.
From understanding, did you say the transition was to start this year?
Yes.
And you were looking at this to be implemented next year?
The school within a school would begin, but the pathways, the additional electives would begin year one. The pathways would be year two because remember, we want to have the students' voice, the parents' voice, and then we want to use the data to drive the pathway. So that would be year two.
Okay, I have to make you repeat that answer. When you say it will begin in the fall of 2016, the relocation of students would begin. Okay. So I have a few questions and comments. I know that in large, in a lot of large urban areas where there's very high population density, New York, places like that, they've created school within a school models. How extensively have you looked at implementation issues of school within school models? Have you visited any school within school? Have you drawn on best practices? And have you really sort of studied some of those things? Because I think those, that will be essential to a successful development of a program.
So definitely, this, I want to repeat that, this is a fairly new recommendation in response to the feedback that we heard from the community. And we came up with the recommendation after looking at the research and examining other models that do currently exist. If approved, that would definitely be first on our to-do list is to go and visit the existing programs that we read about that are currently successful. And so, definitely, we've looked at their success, looked at their ability to move student achievement, to still keep that culture and climate, that pride within the smaller academy by having the students operate through cohort in the same classes. They, they really feel that they're in a mini-school within a larger building, and so we would want to go and visit that and see it firsthand, be able to ask questions and learn from their experiences, things they, it may have taken them three years to learn, we want to learn in a short period of time and duplicate success.
So, another question I have is, so would your, your feeder process for the African-centered academy that would be the school with, that would be a school within a school, would that feed from African-centered prep lower school, or would students who come from another high school who want to enter into that academy, could they enter in? Would there be anything that would prevent them? Would there be selection criteria or anything that would, would it open up opportunity or would there be some, would it be an expectation that you would have had to start at the lower grades?
We would continue it as a signature program. The way it's currently set up is that any student who comes through the elementary program, which would, through the master plan, would become a K8, you automatically feed into the high school program. Any other student that did not come through the elementary school has to apply and meet the admissions criteria as we have for all of our signature programs, and, but those who are coming through the elementary are already a part of the K-12 program that currently exists.
So you would have admissions criteria for the African-centered prep academy at the high school level?
That's correct.
But not for the, not for the other pathways because these would be, this would be a comprehensive neighborhood school?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to take one more question if I can really quickly. So I, I think the, the other question I have then is related to the comprehen, the, well, you talked about the community when you talked to the African-centered prep community, and you described it as the, the community. I didn't know, to what extent have you discussed this concept with the students who are in the school now, and they're getting their input about it? How much have you discussed it with parents who are currently have children in the school? And then, of course, there's a larger community that has an interest in this topic, but I, I want to understand, I guess, a little bit better about what was the student response to this?
So the earlier conversations that included students were centered around the original recommendation, and so, they were told about the pathways and also, they really enjoyed the idea of having expanded extra and co-curricular activities. Many of them may not have an opportunity to perform or compete for their school because they're freshmen and there's only one team, and so, it's difficult to get playing time on the varsity team if it's only one team. So increasing the size of the school would then create additional teams, a JV team. So increasing the size of the school would then create additional teams, a JV team, a freshman team, and so they really liked that. And so, uh, so the students gave, uh, positive feedback on that. I was able to speak to a few of them. I know Mr. Tunis and, uh, Shannon, uh, Jack spoke to a greater number of those. I will say, we were recently, just last week, I believe, back at Southeast, or, I'm sorry, AC Prep for a, a parent meeting, and it included parents from the southern end of the city. So we had not only parents from, uh, Southwest Early College Campus, we also had parents from Hellcook. We also had parents from AC Prep Upper and Lower that attended that. And so, uh, it wasn't just the families within AC Prep. There were also families of those who would come over to the, uh, the neighborhood component of that. They really advocated that we protect that program and, and keep the integrity that was intended when the program was started. And so, so it's, it's those within AC Prep and those who would then join the larger school, they still wanted to see that pride, that culture, those relationships continue to be nursed and continue to grow. So it, it was, it, uh, it, our recommendation came from that outpouring of support that we do something like this.
You know, I think, Ms., I'm sorry. I just wanted to, in terms of the, uh, the input from the students. I think, um, number one, I think that the, that, that to summarize, our, our time with them would be that they certainly appreciate the, uh, the opportunity, the, uh, uh, the criteria to, the admission criteria, but they also look for ways to find greater opportunities to part, in participation. They were looking for more opportunities, they were looking for higher rigor. They were looking for courses that were greater, of greater challenge. And so one of the things that I think that this particular part of this recommendation does is it allows us to do that and still maintain that, that culture of an African-centered high school. And so the, the intent of this recommendation is to do all of the above, especially, I think, as Dr. Morello said, with, with the size of the school getting as small as it was, that we needed to, eh, have a way to increase enrollment, to increase those opportunities.
Real quickly, Ms. Rogers, I know you're next, but I want to break protocol here. Uh, Ms. Robinson is, uh, under time constraint. I want to make sure that we, uh, accommodated that and give her a chance to ask some questions.
Um, with the school, just a real quick question, just in terms of when you go and do more research, we really need that. I know that the models are very strong in other localities, um, especially in high-choice environments. And so, uh, making sure that you look back and give us some examples, because I was looking in the background for that.
A couple of questions on, uh, certification. You mentioned that, uh, uh, teachers in K-two would have to, uh, earn a reading certification. And I guess my question is, who pays for that, for them to have to go back to school?
Um, we would pay for that.
Then my second question, um, those students in grades three through six, they would be specializing, have a special area. Would that require additional certification also?
It would require additional professional development. And then, um, as far as certifications, I'm working with UMKC right now to look at getting a math specialization, a science specialization for those teachers who would need it.
And one, one question for Mr. Davis. Ms. Davis, you mentioned that, that, uh, African-centered school that in the extracurricular courses, uh, you mentioned that they would be taking, I think, African drum and, and dance and, uh, African history. But my concern would be, are they al, would they also be able to take, for example, first and second year chemistry, first, second year, uh, calculus? The, the advanced course, would those be available also in addition to?
Yes, the core curriculum offerings will remain intact. And so, uh, the expansion, so we still will offer the state mandated, uh, offerings, four years of math, science, and so forth, American government. And then they still will maintain the African-centered-themed courses. And through the, uh, recommendation or through the consolidation, we will be able to also offer the college and career, uh, pathway courses as well as additional electives that they would have access to.
First off, I just want to say I'm, I'm really happy with the plan presented thus far. Creating comprehensive experiences at our elementary, middle school, and high school level, I think is good to be sure that our, our kids have a reason to want to go to school and they find joy throughout the day and, and new experiences. Um, I guess with that, when we talk about, um, the K, or, excuse me, the three, the third through six, uh, certifications, is there, are we looking at a diversity of certifications, I guess, at the school and grade level? Or what are, what are we thinking as far as, like, being sure that schools have content area?
For our schools to have enough rounds, like, for example, this is already being done in some schools. So if I'm really good at teaching science and I get a lot of good results in science, then I may teach all of the fifth grade science while another teacher teaches the English Language Arts. And so, um, it depends, and once again, uh, we're working with UMKC to look at different specializations, just like we have with the reading specialist. But one of the pieces is, um, I plan for science all day. I work with science with different groups of kids. And so that way, we know that that content level is there and that kids are being able to get the highest instructional quality from that teacher.
So, all right, I guess, to piggyback on that question, is there a plan to ensure that, like, a school building or a grade level has a science?
Yes.
Content, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Oates, I think one of the other things that's different a little bit is that elementary certification is not subject-specific. And because of that, then I think it, it's our responsibility to make sure every building has a subject matter expert in their building.
Exactly.
Let's see here. Oh, uh, so I really like basing the, um, the, uh, pathways off of, uh, parent desires, student desires, and also data that shows what the local economy is, uh, bearing out. I guess, how often are we thinking about maybe, you know, looking at our, our offering and refreshing it? Is this like a yearly thing, uh, every three years, every five years?
We would follow the data and that Mark is doing. Um, and I would say that we should be revising and looking every three years. Um, and that way, we know that the STEM will be really strong for a while. But we need to make sure that we're staying current and that we're preparing our students to be successful in the college. So the conversation with the, the higher end and, uh, also with our business partners would be two areas that we would continue to evaluate.
Um, so, last thing, on the, uh, the independent school evaluations. So, uh, I think the greatest, um, strength of the master plan is the neighborhood school program, because typically, communities have similar needs. Um, I guess in that, uh, independent school evaluation, um, it, are, are we looking, I guess, at like the, the, the whole student experience in that school and how we can better provide for that community? Different, seeing as different communities have, um, different needs.
Yes. I wa, I want them to look at every area of that building. I want them to give us feedback on how we can make our schools better and improve them. Uh, not only from academics, but you know, for me, academics is going to be number one, uh, but the second is that, uh, experience for that student. And then also, what can we do to support those buildings better? I want to know that.
I'm going to jump in really quickly, uh, Mr. West, uh, excuse me. Uh, there's a question that came to the cube that I think is, is germane to Mr. Oates' point. Uh, and that basically just wanted to know what a third-party, uh, evaluation would offer that an internal evaluation would not.
The external evaluation, and a lot of districts have done this, um, they bring in someone that, uh, comes in and they've evaluated in other areas. So they have that foundation, uh, as to what to look for. And, uh, of course, they look at our RFP and what that stated that we wanted them to evaluate. But the external brings in, uh, an unbiased, uh, kind of, uh, eye for us. And I want that person to come in and tell me what's good, what can be improved on, and what is not working. And I want them to do that and see us as a level playing field. There is no sacred cows, there's no, this is my content area, so I'll evaluate my content area. I want that external from the outside to come in and really assist us with that.
When you brought this before us last time, I know I was, um, highly critical of, frankly, most of it. And so I just want to start off by expressing appreciation for, uh, the level of responsiveness to a lot of my, uh, harsher criticisms. A big fan of you providing us research that shows your understanding of the impact, the disproportionate impact of, uh, class sizes for low-income students of color in the early grades, uh, for which there's a strong consensus of data that supports that, where there isn't that same level of consensus, say, at the high school level. Uh, and so, I mean, it shows the level of granularity and specificity that, uh, the previous, uh, version of this, uh, didn't provide, and this, and this one does. Um, I really enjoy the, um, the literacy certificates, particularly at the early years, um, and the willingness of the district to say, we ought to be making these investments in our staff. Uh, that this isn't a burden that we, you know, toss on them and say, good luck. Uh, but that, that we step up, uh, and make that investment. Um, and again, you back that up with, uh, some fairly compelling research. It says, this is why this makes sense. So there are preponderant examples throughout here where you've got some really compelling data, which kind of points a glaring eye at the one area, uh, that gave me a lot of heartburn last time, uh, but lacks, um, a lot of the same kind of research basis here. Um, and so I'm curious about a plan, um, uh, the timeline on, uh, when a plan is going to be forthcoming relative to, um, a high school consolidation. My, probably one of my proudest moments as a board member was when we moved forward with the school closures, uh, in twenty-ten, and it resulted in us providing actual opportunities for children who were essentially just warehousing in very tiny campuses, and we weren't giving them anything they wanted. At the same time, my greatest moment of shame as a board member is probably when we adopted the closure plan and we did it without having a plan to actually meet all children's needs. And so that blessings were disproportionately, uh, distributed. Uh, I still am not clear of how, uh, of what your plan here is to accomplish, uh, a school merger and get the benefits that some of our scholars got last time um, without the deficits that most of our scholars got last time. Uh, in particular, what I'm curious about is, I get that having four hundred high schools in one building that's designed for over fifteen hundred and having three hundred in a building designed for over fifteen hundred means we're spending a lot of money on building that should be going to children, um, and that it doesn't give us a quorum for things like athletics and extracurriculars. I get that. What I don't get is why this particular solution versus any other solutions that you looked at and considered? Uh, and kind of like, what's the evidence basis for doing a school within a school versus whatever else you might have contemplated instead of this idea?
And I think, Mr. West, that some of your answers about the transition and what we're going to do to make this happen will come through the, the presentation that Jesse will do at the end. Um, when we talk about, uh, why this, uh, because of the STEM focus uh, that we really believe we need to provide for our students. As you can see in your binders, we put in the Project Lead the Way, uh, scope and sequence for you, for the biomed, for the engineering, and for the computer science. Those are courses, um, that are rigorous, engaging, and are taking place right now in schools right around us, in all their high schools, not just in some, or not just you get on a bus and go to manual and you, which is a very, manual is dear to my heart. I'm a manual person myself when I was in high school. I went right to that school and took classes myself. But I still say we need to provide those electives inside our buildings for our students that don't want to leave. Because the biggest thing I saw when I was in high school was, kids didn't want to be away from their home school. They, they were athletes, or they were part of clubs, or part of student council. They didn't want to go, but they wanted those same opportunities. That's why this plan versus some other, and putting those high-level courses that have capstones at the end and experiences, and us providing those internships and shadowships that align to where I believe I want to go to college for, is important and critical. When we look at, uh, the school within a school, I think that the greatest feedback that we received asking for more than a pathway was to value the work, uh, that had been done to create the African-centered schools. Uh, some people, uh, I would say, may think, well, they could be a pathway because it's not that large of a group of, of students. But I would say and push back that I believe that the school within a school is a good idea because the concept was birthed, and we have a lot of parents and students that like that concept. And we grew that. I mean, when we first started, it was very small. But now, some may say, okay, you've got six grade levels and you only have a hundred and seventy students. That's not very big. But we still honor those parents because they're part of our district, and we provide that for them, because that's what our stakeholders want. So that's why a school within a school. And then it's our job as an administration to go find the research and how a school within a school is implemented correctly, and we provide that for our stakeholders. And so when we look at the pathways and why, it's because we are preparing them for college and career readiness. The best thing we can do in preparing them and in getting them in these courses is to see an increase in our ACT scores. That's the key. We've got to start that rigor at the middle school and get our math and science teachers understanding that rigor so that when they take that junior ACT score, we're no longer trying to bump them up. They're hitting twenty-one, and now we're pushing. And now we're aiming for twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, on up. That's where we want to be in all schools, not just in some schools, which many of us could think of which some schools might be, but to provide that opportunity, to get that rigorous course, it has to go in pathways. We've got to provide these courses for our students, and we've got to prepare them. That's why when we look at the K-two with the reading certs, our teachers come in with the certification and go through the program of study at those higher ed. But not a lot is done to take teachers deep in teaching the art of reading. We've got to supplement that, because we know our students come in low. We've got to build them. It's our job to put in all these supports and structures so that when they get there, they're ready to succeed. That's what we're here for. That's what public education is about, about us fixing this. And these courses have been proven, as you can see through the research and what you'll read on Project Lead the Way. If you pull up the website, it'll show you that. These are good courses, and that's what we want to provide for our students, is the very best. And they're proven through research to be high-level and really engaging and to take. I have a nephew that went through a Project Lead the Way, and it's, what, at Rolla First and now at MU. It was, it prepared him to get where he is now, and we're very thankful for the coursework. Mr. Davis?
An additional benefit to, uh, answer your question as to, uh, why is this advantageous for students? I'd like to, uh, direct everyone's attention to that second, uh, bullet, the second one that's in blue, that currently we have twenty-five elective offerings at Southwest Early College Campus. We have twenty-two at, uh, AC Prep. Through the, uh, combined school, we'll be able to offer, uh, approximately thirty-five elective offerings based on the increased amount of students. And so when we're at a, when students are at a very small program, uh, oftentimes, by the time they're senior, they're taking a second or a third PE class because they've taken every class that interests them and that is available to them. And so at both of the high schools, uh, you would not find, uh, what, we would like to have high schools that have an orchestra, a choir, and a band. We don't have that currently at either one of the programs. By expanding the elective, uh, off, offerings and opportunities for students, uh, we shouldn't just have just a, uh, basic-level computer class. We have desktop publishing, we have, uh, coding, uh, accounting. We can expand those, uh, those number of electives, debate class and so forth. With the increased number of instructors that come with the increased number of students, we then allow for more comprehensive, uh, high school experience through that.
Two weeks ago, I was doing a walkthrough, uh, in another city of, that had the school within a school thing. And about a month before that, I was doing a school walkthrough in another city that had the school within a school. In both of those cities, they had what we would describe as a signature school and a community school inside the same building. And in both of those cities, um, honestly, I was a little disgusted. What they wound up with was one school, the signature school, that was the haves, and you had the community school, uh, that was the have-nots. And so what, it really created this space where the young people, who last, two weeks ago, were literally on the lower level um, and felt very much of under these other folks, uh, where we did not create a space where they, they felt like they were as valued as the students in the building above them. Uh, I've seen this in two different cities. How do, how do we make sure Kansas City's not the third place I see this?
Because what you've heard in the presentation, Mr. West, is that the African-centered school within a school would continue its theme and continue the electives it has. But the greater picture that we painted for you tonight is the pathways. Those are for all students. Those are for all students in that building. The comprehensive school would have the pathways. And so, all of the resources, when we talk about the engineering, the computer science, the biomed, whichever area Pro Start, culinary arts, that they choose, those are all students, so there's no have and have-nots. As we painted this picture for you in the pathways, that's for all of the students in that building, increasing electives for all, that's the key word, all students. Now, would we allow our African-centered students to come down and get into a pathway if that's where they believe they were going to college? Yes. But, we want to make sure that you, that it's clear, it's all students that we're creating this school for, not just to put a school within a school and they just continue with low-level electives, which is what they currently have, when Mr. Davis talks about, after I've taken so many, I have to take a second PE or a third PE. We want to ensure that there's engaging, rigorous courses out there. And also, one area that we got to continue to think about is improving those upper-level courses, like our dual AP, those courses, like what we're talking about when Dr. Davis talked about the middle school, and our algebra students getting into geometry this summer so that we can get them into Algebra II in the fall as a freshman. Those are the things that we're going to do for all students, not just the school within a school.
I asked that exact same question two weeks ago, and what they said is that the kids from the signature school could absolutely come down and take extracurricular, or take, you know, elective courses or those things with the kids from the community school. However, in this particular city, they said that the kids from the community school were not allowed to go upstairs and take electives. And so, I'm, I get that your African-centered students could take classes as a pathway. If there is an African-African-American cultures studies course that is only offered within the African city, African Studies program, African-centered program, would the community students be able to enroll in that? And if the, if the answer is no, it sounds kind of scary, but also, if the answer is yes, then it kind of begs the question, do you really have two separate schools?
But I do think you have to also look at that as to how many. When you look at that, that may be a case-by-case, but the answer would be yes. But it would be case-by-case as to which student and why. And I think that's a conversation with the counselor as to why you want to go up, or why would you like to go. And I'm not even sure, I do believe that we will have to have the African-centered school in an area together, because they will need to bond, and they will need to become a cohort. But I think that separation of an us-them, remember, it's an us-us, and that building, because the other piece, and I don't know how to really respond and say why this building did this or did that, but I can tell you, by them playing sports together, they become a team. By them being in clubs together after school, they become a team. By them being in choir or music together after school and those extracurricular activities, they become a team, and they become a building. And that's what we want to see.
Thank you for, first of all, gathering some of the data that I requested as far as boundary, the building rating scale that you've done with the prior meetings, and a couple of other. The only one thing I don't see in here, or two pieces, is a financial piece of the cost of closing buildings, of the recommended buildings that you're proposing, what that cost would be. And then, also, kind of piggybacking, I started thinking about, so if you're asking for the African-centered to stay as a signature, how does that work if you're saying now that they're allowed, any students allowed to take the African course if they want to? So how is that, do they not apply as a signature then, or are you going to have them apply the signature before they take that elective course? And then, I also want to know the implementation, because this wasn't discussed, as far as scoring of the building for accreditation and meeting our APR. So, now that we know that the legislature, that the state is moving towards more of pushing of building accreditation, so if we're doing a school within a school proposal here, what is the discussion as far as rating for the school? Are you going to get two ratings, are you going to get one rating? And what does that look like for, when we're talking about state accreditation?
Of the three questions, I'll state that the financial component, I believe, is going to be included in Shannon's presentation when they come back up. I'll go ahead and take the one regarding the students from the neighborhood school taking African-centered courses, and then Dr. Murillo will come forward on the APR question. So, currently, at our middle schools, we have cohorts of students, may have an advanced cohort, that are taking, say, an Advanced English 8, an Advanced Math, I'm sorry, Algebra I, Advanced 8th Grade Science, for example. And so, those students travel with one another. The elective teachers will teach those students in their sections, but they'll also have sections of everyone else in the building. And so, with the master's schedule, even in, if I step away from the school within a school model, even in a regular setup system in the spring, when we have students sign up for their course requests, if we have, say, three students that sign up for a course, it's unlikely that we'll offer that course because we didn't have enough interest in it to offer that. And so, through the master scheduling process, if, you know, we have additional course requests for the students who are not within the mini-school, then definitely, we will look at that on a case-by-case basis and be able to open up a different section. So you may have the African dance teacher teaching the, those in the mini-school, but then, there's another section that can be opened up, then those students will be able to take that as well in another section. So, it may not be able to say it across all courses, but definitely, I anticipate that we will have sections in some courses where you have students taking it.
Okay, I can understand that, but you just stated that you would still keep it a signature school, so all we know now, currently, you have to apply and meet a certain standard. So what if, I know you're going to do a, you say you're going to do a case-by-case basis, and then you also brought up, we've been talking a lot about the culture and the climate of buildings, and building those bonds with teachers, and building that within your own school. So, I'm still not understanding, how is this going to be implemented? What is the plan? How, where is it? I mean, what's the plan?
Yeah, so, with the mini-school, with the academy, we will still recruit teachers that have the passion and interest for that particular theme, so that want and desire to teach students with the African-centered lens. And we will have students who, as much as possible for those core African-centered courses, will be, it's unique to them, they'll share those same teachers, the master scheduling may look different in that model. Now, the courses that would be considered electives, such as, say, the dance class, the drumming, we may not have, because it is an elective, and even the students within the mini-school have access to electives. You know, we have, we want to offer 35 electives, so it may not occur where we'll have six sections of dance solely with those in the African-centered school within a school. And so, some courses may be extended, those elective courses, to students even from outside the signature program. We would come back after the, you know, and provide greater detail as to how that would look, once we, we could give you more specifics, once we've gone through the engagement process on the master's schedule and the course request.
What's the timeline on your engagement process for this?
As far as, I'm not sure I'm following your question, the engagement process for the transition, are we talking about the transition process?
The transition for these offered courses and electives to students and parents, what...
Well, I think we've got, we're going to talk about that coming up, in terms of how we're going to transition from the recommendation of this plan to implementation. And so, if that's the part that you're referring to, that, it's coming.
Okay, I'll wait on that one then.
Okay, and I'll quickly run through the other two, I mean, the other one, but Ms. Montero, we have already met, I've met with every high school principal, counselor, and their master scheduler, and we've met with the middle school. So, we've met with them, we've given their, the course requests, we've given them programs of study, we have set out what that looks like in the course offerings already. We've talked with them that if there would be a merge of the two buildings, that we will bring them back in, walk them through those next steps. So we are communicating with the teachers in those buildings. But right now, their goal is, is to move forward as if nothing happened, there were no changes, we are in progress of moving forward. So, they know that, we have benchmarks set with the counselors and the building administration on the scheduling. Right now, what we're in the phase of is course requests, okay? All right, so with the rating, you talked about the APR, and what that would look like. Southeast High School, or the TB, to-be-determined name of that school, would be one school with one rating. What we would do with the school within the school is, I can code those students, just like our ELL students, we code them so we can pull out special data on them, just progress monitor them, because a lot of the ELL students are infused in regular classrooms. This way, if I code them in Tyler, we can run reports to extract that data. I would do the same for the African-centered students, so that we would also look at the school as a whole, but be able to look at the school within a school. That's easily done, but the school would receive one APR rating, but we would be able to dissect that data.
All right, board members, let's do a few quick follow-ups here, and then we'll move on.
I'm just having a little bit of difficulty connecting the terminology with what I'm actually seeing as the praxis. This doesn't really sound like a school within a school. As you said, there's going to be one rating for Southwest, then you're going to disaggregate the students out. It sounds like a program, and I'm not going to, you know, that doesn't bother me, but it's, I think there's a, we're naming something that in actuality, it really is not. And I think that's problematic in itself. Secondly, I mean, because are there two principals, are there, I mean...
Well, those details, we're still working out with Mr. Tunis, and if we wanted a true school within a school, Dr. Hertzfeld, we could apply to the state and appeal for two location codes for that building, but what we, what would be the easiest is to have one location, and then we identify them within our system and be able to pull that data out. But we certainly can appeal to the state, and I believe they would allow us to have two-building code locations.
You know, I don't, I'm not pushing for that, I'm just, I guess I'm having the problem with, I don't think the terminology that we're using is describing the practice. We're talking about taking a school, reducing it to a program, and immersing it within another school. That's fine and dandy, if that's what we're doing, but I'm a little bit concerned, you know, because a school within a school, sometimes we'd talk about two entities coming to something together, and, but that's not what's happening here. And I'm just concerned that we keep using the language of school within a school, but everything I'm hearing is a program within a school.
You know, I, whether we're using the right terminology or not, I think it's, it needs to, we need to clearly define what our intent is. And I think that what we heard from our community when we decided and used the term "school within a school" was that we wanted, we didn't, we wanted more than a, than an African-centered pathway. We wanted more than an African-centered program. What we wanted was to retain the African-centered culture of what goes on in that building, and still give our students the opportunity to expand the electives and the courses that were offered to them, because we don't have enough students to do that. And so, whether there were rituals that would be celebrated during the day, those areas that exist right now, we want to continue. We want those traditions to be very visible within that building. And so, the idea behind it, based on what we've heard from our community, is allow us the opportunity to continue to do that. That is the intent of what we're proposing. If we're using the wrong terminology, then we need to correct it, but I want to make sure that we're clear in what it is that we're trying to propose. We want our students who ask and want that experience to be able to get it, to live it, it becomes part of their culture, what they do, and yet still have the opportunity for 35 electives, or whatever the number actually turns out, to increase their high school opportunities. You know, as I indicated earlier, when we met with the students, they're asking for more rigorous courses. And so, how can we do that and still maintain that cultural experience that they're asking for? We call it a school within a school, if that's the wrong terminology, we just need to make sure we're clear about what our intent is.
Following up to the, you'd say, okay, so the school within a school concept, they would have one APR, so, and we know that DESI will take the best out of three years, so are the scores close enough to each other that it still wouldn't make any difference on the building accreditation or APR? Are the scores close enough on their EOCs?
I'm lost on what you mean by...
So, if they're, if they have a...
I think I understand what your question is.
I'll clarify my question. So, if they have a math test, and they have a science test, and they have an English test, the EOC is what they take for the state, are they scoring very similar? Are they 50 points within each other? Are they 100 points within each other? Are they making the points for them to get and still have accreditation for the building?
Are you talking about the African-centered students versus...
Yes, the scores of the current buildings right now, Southwest, Southwest and African-Centered.
Yes, both buildings are provisionally accredited.
So, the scoring of putting them together, it still wouldn't matter, because they're still going to take the best out of three years for DESI?
No, what happens with the building code in schools is that, whatever building you have open, that's your scores. If you have, when we take SWEC students and put them with, at the Southeast location, Mr. Tunis and I have been working on that, so Mr. Tunis, go ahead and talk about what that happened.
What actually occurred, DESI will do, is they'll evaluate where the students came from. And depending upon where they come from will be the scores that they use. So if there were more students that come from Southwest, they would use the Southwest scores for 2014 and 2015. If more of the students came from African-centered, then they would use the scores for those years. And then, in next year, 2016, they would use the combined score. If the numbers were virtually similar, then they would create a new, they would treat it like a new school.
Well, according to your data here, for the enrollment population, if you're going off of that, Southwest has 391, and AC Prep has 377, so you would have more kids taking the EOC technically at Southwest than, and using Southwest scores? But in your movement plan, you only have 202 Southwest students going to ACE.
Again, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is going to evaluate that, and they're going to evaluate it based on the number of students. There's a committee that will look at it, but the guideline that they'll look at, and I don't know how much leeway, what 50% is, nor do I know exactly what date they use in terms of what the enrollment is, but basically, the rule is, if you have a higher percentage from one particular school over the other, they would use the data, the two-year data from the school with the highest enrollment. If they're virtually the same, very close, then they would treat it as a new school.
I would be curious to know how much of difference that this committee would consider being the difference, if there is, if it is that close.
Yeah, we'll have to get that.
The thing here, debating whether or not to broach this from a slightly different angle, because my intention is not to be insulting to anyone in the room, but I got to wonder, as we look at our achievement data, I can understand wanting to keep cohorts of young people together, because they have built relationships, I think you can really leverage those in an educational environment. But I don't see a tremendous amount of evidence that the quality of education, or at least the scores, the test scores that we're seeing in some of these impacted schools, maybe they justify some more radical approaches to trying to shake up the instructional livery that these children are receiving. I'm not clear, are we working hard to preserve the institution of adults, or are we working hard to preserve the cohort of children? Because I'm not clear, the adult institutions are adding as much value to our children as... as maybe something else entirely different from what you're proposing could. Did you wanna respond?
Did you want to respond? Okay. So, through the consolidation, we would approach this from, this is a whole school, not just a whole school reform, but also district-wide. So we are looking at the career pathways as an opportunity, as Dr. Murillo mentioned earlier, to enhance the high school experience, to provide courses that are not only more rigorous and more relevant, but also help them keep pace or prepare for this changing global economy that we have. And through the career pathways, through the partnerships that we would have, many of the students would leave high school with industry-specific certifications, whether it's, if they chose a construction trades pathway, if they chose, you know, there are, in that capstone senior year, you can actually walk out with a certification that helps you prepare for that career. And so, when we met with the families through the master plan, we saw it as not waiting until you get to college to major in a field. You can choose a major even in high school that allows you to get that level of detail. We believe that improves the educational experience. We also are continuing to not only expand our advanced course offerings, AP and dual credit, but we're also implementing advanced courses at the freshman and sophomore level as well. We've looked at a pre-IB design. We will continue to identify students and work with counselors and principals to create that. We're looking at creating a freshman academy. We want it to be a whole school reform in all of our neighborhood high schools to get to that end that you just described, making sure that we have that standard of excellence for all students, signature and non-signature. I hope that...
You use the word "transformation" in kind of federal parlance? You said "transformation", and that has specific implications. I'm wondering if that what you intended to imply? You know, so, when we think of "transformation", I think of, from a federal perspective, of creating a new institution where the students are the same, but 51% or more of the adults are different. If that's what you meant, that's certainly responsive of my inquiry of, how do we maintain the cohesion of students while completely and utterly disrupting the instructional model? But I just wanted to check in, is that what you were referring to?
Well, I thought your question was how are we improving the quality of our schools holistically? And so, that's where I was mentioning that we're not only looking at it from the standpoints that may have been a part of this presentation, but also looking at how do we enhance and improve the experience holistically for students? And so, it is improving, the pathways are just one strand in that, the additional electives is just one strand. The additional higher-level courses is another strand. The improved culture and climate is another. The reading certification is another. So, it's all of these strategies working simultaneously to improve our instructional program and the, to improve educational outcomes for children, K-12.
Mr. Chair, I think we have had a tremendous number of questions about this particular component of the project. There's, I think people are eager to have some definitions and a little more background on your conceptual model. And so I think it would be helpful for us to, in order to be able to proceed on this presentation, I think there may be some additional work or discussion you could bring back to the board on some of that component regarding the southeast and African-centered program. I think it would be helpful, because clearly, we've got a lot of questions, and we won't be able to get them all answered tonight.
Okay. Jesse Lang, District Planner?
Yes. Good evening. One recommendation that Kansas City Public Schools family are very excited about is the recommendation regarding transportation improvements. So much so, that I will tell you a story. We were sharing these recommendations with one group of students, and they literally applauded as we were explaining what we wanted to do with our transportation service. So this is really important to a lot of people. As Shannon mentioned, 90% of our survey participants ranked transportation as being either very or somewhat important. So, if you recall, our transportation policy currently states that if a student lives within a mile and a half of their school, they're not eligible for transportation service. So they need to find another way to get to school. Which means, for children in our district, that often entails them walking to school. That's for all grade levels, K-12. So we could have a kindergartner walking a mile and a half in January or February to their neighborhood school. This walk boundary is the highest of any school district in the Kansas City area, and it's not good enough for our kids. The master plan recommendation is to revise this policy and to reduce our walk boundary to a half-mile. This means that if you live over a half-mile from your school, you now will be eligible for transportation. In addition, currently, students could walk up to six blocks in order to reach their bus stop. And oftentimes, the stop and the time that the bus comes and leaves, it changes because new kids are added to the route, and so it kind of moves around. The master plan recommends establishing fixed bus stops, and we would reduce the distance a student would have to walk to only two blocks. So you can see why families would be excited about those changes. In addition, we'll add some revisions or additions to the plan. Again, those are noted in blue on the PowerPoint there. But we, based upon community feedback, we feel that we should consider doing even more. We need to spend the next school year conducting an assessment of a couple more expansions of our transportation service. One item that we'd like to look at is our activity buses. We've heard from students who say, yeah, I'd like to stay after school and participate in activities, but there's only one bus, and by the time it takes me home, I have to, you know, ride the bus for so long, it makes me not want to participate. So we don't want to have student exploration or activities be hindered, you know, by our transportation service. This is something that needs to be considered. In connection with this, we need to conduct an assessment as well as examining the feasibility of running some of our afternoon buses, perhaps after the extended day, so like at the elementary level, maybe after Link, and then after some of activities at our high schools as well. The master plan also recommends adjusting school attendance boundaries for our neighborhood schools, which you'll notice, as we go through some of these recommendations, these have not changed since they were presented to the board in November, as far as where the specific boundaries are located. The plan still reduces the average distance to school for the district by a half-mile for all students. So we're putting more students closer to their neighborhood school. Now, as we went out and we talked to parents about these draft boundaries, we discussed our criteria, our goals, what we're trying to achieve, and we drew boundaries, and it was really well-received. No one said, "Don't touch the boundaries." Basically, there was acknowledgement that, yes, we have a lot of issues with our boundaries, and they understood why we were making the recommendation, but the conversation turned to, "All right, I understand this boundary, but I live outside of it, and I still want to go to this school. What does that look like?" So we explained the recommendation that students in those transition grades, in six, eight, and 12, they're allowed to remain and graduate from their school. So let's say they're a junior this year at Central, you know, they've been at Central their entire high school career, and next year they're gonna be a senior, but they're out of the boundary. They can stay at Central, and the district will continue to transport them to that school. We also explained that KCPS has a policy, if the student wishes to attend a neighborhood school that's outside of their attendance zone, they can attend as long as the building has space, and they provide their own transportation. Establishing new boundaries also affords us the opportunity to create a feeder pattern for our schools. In our public meetings, again, this was something that was widely supported by parents. I think we can see the benefit of being able to tell a student when they walk in the door, day one of elementary school, this is your elementary school, this is where you're gonna go to middle school, and this is where you're gonna go to high school. There's a sense of pride and ownership, there's connection between those two schools, and it's something that's lacking in our district right now. You'll see the pattern that we show on the screen, too, that has not changed since the recommendation that we gave back in November. This slide displays our current situation on the left, and then our proposed on the right. As you can see on the left, these are our elementary boundaries, in the light gray with the dark black, our current high school boundaries. The lines obviously don't match up, meaning that we do not have a feeder system by the time that you go to the different school levels. One example there, Attix is currently being split. By the time they get to high school, those kids are going to three different neighborhood high schools. I think that's kind of a small area, those kids are being split unnecessarily. So how, we're proposing fixing that with the feeder pattern. We've shown the different high schools are highlighted with the different colors, showing the elementary schools that would be feeding into each high school. We can look at each map specifically, if we look for the proposed Northeast High boundary. And again, if you'd like to reference these maps, they're in the supplemental information that's in your packet. These shows the specific street names, if you have a question about that. This were the same documents that were shared with parents at our public meetings, as well as explaining which schools would be feeding into Northeast High School, the four schools that would feed into East High School, the ones that would feed into Central Academy, as well as the schools located south of Brush Creek that would feed into that proposed school within a school at southeast. Some have asked how this will affect the middle school boundaries. Again, the left slide is our current configuration, the right is our proposed. You'll notice there's not a lot of change between the two. The reason for that is because when we established our middle school boundaries, we just did that two years ago, with some input from our community, and we assigned elementary schools to certain middle schools. So we drew the middle school lines based upon elementary. So we're keeping those same elementary schools feeding into the same middle schools for that continuity. So you can see, there's not much change there between the lines, just if those elementary lines adjusted a little bit, there is change. And again, at the middle school level, there wouldn't be any movement, because there's only two grade levels, obviously. Any students that would be outside the boundary will be eighth graders, and so they're grandfathered into that school. To make sure that this framework is, this component of the master plan is a success, a big component of this is the implementation of our student transition. So we've had a lot of questions about this tonight, and so hopefully we can address some of that in this section. We know that although the master plan aims to bring benefits to all KCPS students, about 15% of our population will still be required to change school as a result of a closure or of a boundary change. Now, why 15% is not a staggering figure, not a staggering figure in terms of the KCPS family, in terms of size, we know that if you're part of that 15%, this is huge. This is a big deal. So we have to do everything we can to ensure that students transitioning from one school environment to another have adequate support and monitoring, as well as we want to do anything we can to reduce that anxiety that comes, obviously, from having to switch a school environment. During our public meetings, we talked about student transition, and one thing that was often said was, at the high school level particularly, "Do not repeat what we did in 2010 when Westport was moved to Southwest." The administration agrees, and in many ways, this works in our favor. We have experience with closing a high school and moving students, and we understand that a plan must be in place. We have to bring students together, and this starts way before the first day of school. What we have done is we've researched best practices regarding student assignment. We're not the first school district, obviously, to embark on reassigning students or even implementing a school-in-a-school model. We've interviewed KCPS staff that was part of the previous merger, as well as other school districts around the country who have done similar things. We've looked at what works, what doesn't work, and what lessons can be learned. This is something we've been doing, and we have to continue to keep on doing research and learning more. We've talked to our student councils and found out what their ideas are. And so the results of all this research is a draft transition plan framework that you also have in your packets and your supplemental information. This framework aims to be a guide to ensure that new families are welcomed and informed, and new school cultures are merged. This guide is going to be used, the intent is to be used by transition teams at each school, who will be receiving 25% or more new students. So for the schools that are seeing 25% of new incoming students coming in, they will be having individual transition plans. Transition teams will be comprised of administrators, educators, parents, and students, so they can develop an effective transition plan for their school tailored to the circumstances and needs of their building. What research has shown is when we have buy-in and development from groups who are boots-on-the-ground in the schools, they're more effective. If you notice, within this framework, it's divided into two sections. We have elementary school and high school, as well as it includes kind of just a brief preliminary timeline of when events should occur. One common theme is work has to start immediately. There really is no rest for this. So if the master plan is approved, transition teams need to be put in place right away. Schools should begin collective activities as early as this spring. I mentioned we already talked to student councils at the high school level. They have expressed a desire to already start having joint meetings. The students from Southwest and AC Prep, they would like to start working together this spring. Other things that we've seen in other parts of the country that they've done, for example, at the elementary level, maybe one elementary class will start a PINPAL program with students from another school that perhaps they're getting students from. That way, they become familiar with one another. Principals who are receiving a high percentage of students from another school, they're encouraged to go visit that school, go into that building, that way those kids see your face, they become familiar with you. Read a story to them, that way, there's some familiarity to that. In the spring, we should also hope, host open houses for our new incoming students. So they're the ones who are able to come into the new building, kind of, without a lot of other people there, kind of understand that turf a little bit, be able to explore their new buildings and meet the teachers. We really want them to understand what the benefits are for them to go to the new school. For example, at the high school level, they want to understand what athletics are gonna be offered, what clubs, who are the club sponsors, things like vocal music. We think of the vocal music program that they have at AC Prep, of how great that program is, to be able to see, these opportunities will be available to you at your new school. All that would happen before the school year ends. In the summer, we'd have to continue to focus on bringing school communities together and merging cultures. This could perhaps be a family night, where you bring in new incoming students as well as your existing students. They'd come together for, it could be anything, you could design a barbecue, an ice cream social, whatever, but the idea is to have kids come together and work jointly on activities. It's a way for them to get to know each other and encourages cooperation. One idea at the elementary level they did at a district was they had a scavenger hunt, where we had kids from both schools, kind of working together in teams, finding things around the building. That way, they're working together and also getting to know their new school. In the fall, after the new school starts, we know that the transition is not over. Obviously, you have to continue strengthening, having activities that strengthen that school spirit. Things like a spirit week, but also something that's mentioned in the draft framework for the development of that plan. For each school would be a student transition check-in. This would be one-on-one student counseling with any student who had to switch schools, seeing how they're doing so far and how the transition process is working, what activities they're participating in, and what further opportunities that they have. So obviously, it's a lot of work, but we know that it's necessary, because we want to make sure that this transition for students is successful and goes well. To ensure that our buildings are ready to absorb new students, and in order to provide a better learning environment, the master plan also recommends the issuance of lease purchase bonds for $53 million. This will go into building improvements in four key areas that are listed on your screen. Classroom environment, safety and security, our building infrastructure, as well as our athletic facilities. Approval is necessary so that we can begin the process of renovation by this summer. While the lease purchase and energy performance contract, as well as other funds, would afford the district necessary funds for these necessary improvements, we still, obviously, as shown on the screen, have significant needs with capital improvements, so that we'll have to seek additional funding from the public in the future. With more on specific costs related to all the great things that we want to include in the master plan, let me reintroduce Shannon Jackson, she's gonna break down some of the cost numbers for us.
Question before, a boundary question. I had two boundary questions. One, can we go back to page 28? I think it's showing our master plan's recommendation for current middle school boundaries.
Okay, just one question about that, because I'm trying to look at that, and also trying to look at where you're stating that the proposed third would be Southwest, which would cut that in half, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so with that understanding, can you please take me back to page 26?
What is on the slide that you're referring to? Is it a map of something?
Yeah, I have the...
The South map? The south map?
The schools, proposed schools within a, proposed school within a school at Southwest boundary at feeder schools.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So if I'm looking at that, and I'm also putting in context the proposed third middle school, that puts it in this district right here, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Then if I go back and look at what the past district lines for Hartman, but you've moved Hartman's lines over, because Hartman and Hale Cook had some lines. If I look back, I think on page 21 of your old map.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a little bit concerned that, that with the cozy now, what does our school have a cozy down here?
In the southern part, Page?
Page, right. In closing Page, you had some overlap between Hartman and Hale Cook, that would move some of those students there. But in your new boundaries, it separates that back out. That concerns me, because when I look at all of this once again, I keep coming back to, I put these pieces together. We're getting a section here where we have some of our better developed schools, and it's predominantly white. You're getting ready to close a school, you're not moving them to Hale Cook, because you're redoing the lines. They're going to Hartman and Bannaker. I'm just concerned putting the pages together. We could, after we do all of this, our yellow area is basically a white area. You're a feeder school, a middle school which will be Southwest, a high school to be named, and then you have your Hale Cook. I'm a little bit
Sure. I can speak to hopefully most of your question.
Okay.
In the supplemental information, we have provided the change of race and ethnicity by school, and we'll see that by implementing boundary changes and closures, we're not drastically changing the race or ethnicity makeup of any one of our schools. So, and that's in our data that we provided in there. So that's kind of part of that, that we get to with our school closure. As far as the Hale Cook boundary, Hale Cook currently has that boundary already as an overlay boundary for grades K through three. And they've had that boundary since that school's been established. That boundary was drawn in order to attract new students to our district, and the Hartman boundary was underneath it, going all the way up to 39th Street.
All right, so then, if I'm looking back in the one that was put in October, and I'm looking at, maybe I'm looking at something incorrect, because that's not what I'm seeing.
Look at the figure yellow, how does the race and ethnicity?
Oh, this?
Okay.
Well, then I'll, I'll just
Okay. And as far as establishing a third middle school, we would have to reestablish a feeder pattern for that middle school as well. So different elementaries would feed into that middle school, just like we have feeders for our existing middle schools, we would have a feeder for that middle school as well.
Right, but that would follow the yellow section though, would it be, if you have the Southwest?
Probably, and it might include a school to the north as well, because each, we'd have to distribute the middle school population, and you know, we can't necessarily just cut a school in half. We'd have to distribute based upon where the students live.
Can you go back to the feeder where you have the listing of the schools, you can go in the feeder pattern? I think it's page
The chart?
Even though your bullet point says that the sixth and eighth grade will remain, is there still going to be a change for A's to be K through eight, and then the high school would be nine through 12?
Yes. And that's in the recommendation that we'll get to a little bit later. But the recommendation for the elementary is to grow that one grade at a time. So the current sixth graders would remain there next year, and it'd become a K seven. The high school would be an eight, 12. Then the following year, we'd go to a K eight at the elementary level, and the high school would just be nine, 12.
Am I not, is it not in there? I mean, am I not reading it right?
Well, these are only for our neighborhood schools. So these are our neighborhood elementary schools and AC elementaries.
Okay, so because it's a signature, it's not in there, but it's going to eventually, the proposal is to be K through eight, eventually?
Yes, a signature program, mm-hmm.
Bring us home, that's my goal. Okay, so the academic team and Jessie have outlined, I think, some really exciting things to make our school stronger and better, and give our kids what they said they want and what our parents said that they want. But the question is, how do we pay for that? And before we get to that piece, I just want to highlight some of the major cost areas from the recommendations that you've heard. Obviously, reducing our class size at the K two level is significant with 1.2 million a year. The implementation of the pathways and the expanded electives at 350,000 a year, enhancing our extracurricular and co-curricular activities at almost half a million. Our transportation service, we know reducing that walk boundary from a mile and a half to a half mile, there's a significant tag there of 1.8 million. And then you'll see there that there's $3.8 million that will follow students from where they're currently attending to their new school. So as you know, we're trying to get our elementary schools within that 350-plus kind of target range, and our high schools above 700. So by growing those schools, we bring additional resources and staff with those students. So you'll see that go with those kids, which better supports those schools and those students. So the question is, we've got about an $8 million, a little over $8 million price tag for these improvements, how do we pay for that? Obviously, we want to try and do that as much without impacting the schools wherever And we've presented in the last meeting in November that we, administrative, through administrative efficiencies, we can find about 2 million of that 8 million. So relocating the central office, reducing our administrative costs at the central office, and then reducing the holding costs of our surplus sites. That's around 2 million. Obviously, that, it's a good chunk of the way, but not to 8 million. And with, I do want to point out that within your packets, you do have information around some of our recommendations for the surplus school sites. There aren't changes from November, but I just did want to draw your attention to that, because it outlines sites that should be mothballed, sites that should be declared surplus, and sites for consideration for demolition, so that we can reduce those overall surplus, holding costs for those surplus sites, and redirect those back into our school buildings. So unfortunately, we're not able to pay for everything just through administrative savings, so we're looking at our school closures, revising our facility usage. Right here, you'll see some things that were recommended in November. So continuing our recommendation to close Page Elementary after this school year, but we do want to designate that facility as the preferred site for third early childhood community school site. That's something that we talked about about two years ago, and we still think that that makes sense, and we wanted to make sure that that got into the recommendations. Immediately, we would want to start identifying community partners that could locate at Page for interim use, so that it doesn't fall victim to vandalism. As Jessie and others have mentioned, we're also recommending, similar to November, expanding the AC elementary program to K eight. There's been quite a bit of confusion around this, so I know it's already been stated, but I want to re-clarify. So the expansion, for this year's sixth graders would remain in the elementary school for seventh grade next year. And then the following year, when they're eighth graders, they would remain in the building. So they wouldn't go up to the African-centered program in the high school until ninth grade. Currently, we have seventh and eighth graders in the high school building. So those current seventh graders that are going to become eighth graders would stay at the high school building. We don't want to move them back down to the elementary school. They would stay where they are, and then that would be the last year that you would have middle schoolers in that high school program. When we went out and talked with families at AC Prep, there was a lot of confusion that they thought that this recommendation meant we were taking in and assigning seventh and eighth graders to this K eight program. We're not. It's not a neighborhood-assigned boundary for seventh and eighth graders. That would be for the ninth through 12th grade that would serve as a neighborhood school, but not at the elementary level. It would remain a signature program, but it would be K eight at that, at that location. So similar to what we have currently at foreign language. Now, we are making two revisions to the draft elementary closure recommendations based off the community feedback, and then the subsequent analysis that was conducted. There's been a lot of confusion, and I think some miscommunication around this as well, so I want to make sure that I clarify this. So instead of closing Attucks, the revised recommendation is to relocate the Wendell Phillips staff and students within that boundary to the Attucks building for next year. We know that Ms. Brown and her team have really built something special at Wendell Phillips, and we need to foster and to support that. Unfortunately, Wendell Phillips, the building, has some substantial needs, and the students can be better served in a better facility. This is similar to what we did last school year when we moved the students at King, which had some major challenges at that building as well, when we moved those students to King at KCMSA. And that has worked very well for those students in that school community. Now, we heard some concerns in the public meetings. We, as staff and administration, have also had some concerns about the impact such a move could have on the school's accreditation status, as well as the test scores and the school culture, and, which was reflected in the original recommendations. But after listening to community feedback, we said, okay, we need to go back and reassess. Is there a way that we could preserve all the wonderful things that are happening at the Wendell Phillips building, that culture, the academic success, yet better support the staff and students with a better facility? And we've confirmed with Desi that by keeping the Wendell Phillips staff and the students together, so we've got more than 200 students that are currently at Phillips today, that would go with the staff to Wendell Phillips at Attucks, and by keeping them together and moving them to Attucks, Ms. Brown and her team would also retain the school's test scores over the last two years. I think Mr. Tunis explained that as it would relate to the high school situation. This move would also allow us to retain the autism classrooms where they currently are, so those students wouldn't have to be moved to another location. The next part of this recommendation is rather than closing that Wendell Phillips building completely, is that it could serve as a district-sponsored charter school. And from the laughter, I'm sure people are wondering, well, if there's issues with the building, why are you recommending reusing it? And it's a good question. And so we've evaluated other options. You know, over the last two and a half years, we've been talking with you and I about potentially serving as their sponsor for a charter school that we believe is going to capture students that we currently don't serve. Within their boundaries, we capture anywhere between 20% and 80% of the students living in that area. There are a lot of students living there that we aren't serving in our neighborhood schools, and this is a potential opportunity to bring those students back. But the question is, why that particular building? And we've assessed a lot of different buildings and opportunities there, closed buildings which also have some significant facility needs. By locating it there, that financial responsibility of doing improvements to the building would shift to the charter school versus the district. Jessie mentioned, we have more than 200 million plus dollars' worth of deferred maintenance improvements that we need to do in our buildings. We can't do it all now, but this allows us to focus our resources, get our kids in good buildings, open up another resources that charters, you know, unfortunately, they have this, this pool of resources that we can't, that we're not eligible for, and so that allows us to improve both facilities, attract more students back. So at the middle school level, you see the similar saying recommendation here to implement the Lincoln Middle School Advisory Committee recommendations. Right now, that's recommending an additional assessment. There's a big, whole, thick packet in your binders that has the meeting notes, presentations. If it's too small and you can't read them, let us know, and we'll get you full-size, but we're trying to save some trees, to look at the viability of expanding that program so that we can grow both middle school program and the high school program. We didn't feel comfortable through that steering committee process making that recommendation. At this point, we need to do some additional assessment. One new item that we've already mentioned, based off of the community feedback, is to establish a third middle school planning committee, so that area south of Brush Creek. Right now, we don't have enough, we're not serving enough middle school students at neighborhood middle schools to justify opening a third middle school now, but we have heard significant interest from families east and west of Truce, east and west of 71 Highway, to have a middle school south of Brush Creek. So Dr. Hartsfield, you'd mentioned concerns that it was only going to serve a predominantly white area. The idea is that that would reach from eastbound, east boundary to west boundary, serving that entire area, southern portion of the district. Right now, we're predominantly serving minority students in this area, but we've had some really good, I think, participation levels from all of those schools with interest in establishing it. Challenge is going to be getting enough interest to justify opening that school, where we can serve those kids effectively with the programs that they want and need. So at the south, at the high school level, while we did hear some concerns about closing Southwest versus an alternative of closing AC Prep, we went back, further analyzed those recommendations, and really felt that that original recommendation was the right one. It allows us, by closing Southwest and establishing the school on the southeast campus, allows us to serve kids closer to where they are. That campus has significantly better facilities and options there than what we could ever accommodate on the Southwest campus. But one change that you will see from the November recommendations is designating that Southwest facility as a preferred site for third neighborhood middle school now. That building is way bigger than what we need for a middle school, we know that. But there is potential to have a community, what do we call it? Early childhood community school, site? Community school, similar to what we've seen at our early childhood level, but having partnerships that could co-locate, whether that's with higher ed or nonprofits, that could support that school. So those are things that we'd like to be able to look at as we start work with that third neighborhood middle school advisory committee. And then the last recommendation, we've discussed, establishing the school within the school on the southeast campus. So this slide shows kind of the reconciliation of the costs of providing those enhanced academics, the extracurriculars, transportation, and how do we pay for it? So you can see, we've identified sources, they're just a little bit more than what we believe the cost to be, but around $8 million that we're taking from some of our inefficiencies, and redirecting that to programs and services that are better for our kids. And we know because we have laid out so much tonight, we thought it might be nice to lay out, these are all the new recommendations that have been presented since November, we thought it'd be nice just to have this in one place. I'm going to turn things back over to Mr. Tunis, who's going to wrap things up and anything to cover.
I think we want some questions around this. Ms. Sponsar, we'll start with you.
So one of the things I wanted to know, what is the total cost of your totaled revisions here, so, including closures? So if, if this were to pass, what is your estimated total for everything?
So we're estimating around $8 million a year. So we're estimating around $8 million a year of continuing costs. The one thing that that doesn't account for is that desire to reduce the class size. Eventually, grades three through six. It accommodates that additional cost for K two. It doesn't factor in the additional, we just couldn't, we didn't have enough money to, to do that at this point. But, so it's 8 million annually. We do have some one-time expenses. So establishing the project, Lead the Way Labs at the middle schools, the transfer, the transition plan, program and activities. So there are a few one-time costs, but you'll see, and those are listed underneath operations total. And then obviously, the facility improvements, we're, we're looking at issuing the bonds so that we can do around $50 million worth of improvements.
Okay, so remind me again, we're at 32, 36 on the bonds right now in the buildings? What, what we have, what we own?
We currently, we are somewhere around $37 million, plus the energy bonds that we just did that'll be paid for from energy savings.
Okay. So for 37 million on bonds, you want to go up to 200,000?
No, no, no. What, what, if you recall back from the, the previous facility plans that we've talked about, the next phase of that capital plan development really was a $53 million lease purchase. If you, the energy performance we did, we would virtually use the funds that we currently have as existing operating funds, as one-time funds, and use those for debt reduction. That debt reduction would be the equivalent of approximately $53 million in a lease purchase. The $200 million would be those improvements that we've identified that we can't afford without a vote of the people. Be a bond issue.
So you're proposing to go up to what percentage?
So what we would propose to do is that we would, because by board action, this Board of Education has the authority to approve up to the 53 million. The lease purchase. The Board of Education has the approval to enter into a lease purchase. The amount that we determine is, is the Board of Education makes that determination. We've identified 53 million because we would use the existing funds, operating funds that we currently have for capital purposes to be used for debt reduction. That's how we got to the 53.
So I'm curious about, I see people in blue shirts. Is that, that my people from Wendell Phillips? So you went out and you've done a lot of community engagement with these folks. Could you give me?
So, okay, so we, we had after, I want to do a sequence here because things have evolved. You know, we were out there listening to families and parents and community members. So in November, we started with our four public meetings. Where we essentially broke down for folks, the recommendations that we brought to you in November. So those were all held in November. We then started going out to the school communities that were most impacted by those recommendations in November. So Attics, Southwest, AC Prep were the first schools that we targeted. In those conversations, we heard, okay, you need to start, we want you to reassess this. We want you to take a look at this and, and think about, you know, could we, could you make some changes? And we said, that's why we're here. We're out here to listen. Part of that, that's when we started hearing feedback, not just from school staff and parents, but also from community members, look at, is Attics the right decision? And so at that point in time, we reached out to the Wendell Phillips community. You know, we had the holidays there as well, and scheduled the meeting for, it was originally supposed to be scheduled in early January and it got bumped to late January. And I wanted to make sure, I forgot to mention this, when we reached out, that meeting got scheduled right after the SAC meeting so that families could attend both. So I didn't clarify that very well before. So that is when we, we talked with staff and parents about, here's what we've heard in the community. People suggested that we should look at closure of another school. Wendell Phillips has come up because it's in the same neighborhood boundaries. We want to get your feedback. And so we came back, reassessed that feedback, what we'd heard earlier, and we bring recommendations to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you for kind of the process recap. So you've gotten some feedback from some Wendell Phillips families, but it sounds like not with staff?
No, we, we got quite, I mean, I had a facility, a really good group of staff members. It may not have been all staff members. But we, we had the opportunity to talk with a lot. And, you know, if there's an opportunity to continue that discussion, we hope to do that.
Okay. So you talked with some parents, you talked with some staff. What, and so I've, some of these good people have already emailed me. So I've, I've got some ideas. What are you hearing that are the primary concerns of, of our Wendell Phillips community? And kind of what is the administration's response to those been?
So I think what I've heard, I'm going to ask Al to also weigh in because, Mr. Tunis, to also weigh in because he's, he's received lots of emails that he has forwarded to me. So I would say, from what I have seen from our, and heard from our community meeting, but also in a lot of emails that we've received, you know, over the last week or two, concerns that, that this is a great building. I'm a lead to read volunteer in Wendell Phillips. It's a great building. There's wonderful stuff going on. Yeah, it is. And I love the teachers that we work with. So people are very concerned, the impact that this would have on that team, on the, obviously, any movement has impacts on students. But there's, I think there's been a worry about splitting up that team, splitting up those kids, sending them to a school that's not as good. Those are some of the main things that, that I have, have heard and.
Well, I, I think, Mr. West, I think that, first of all, I don't know that there was anything that was written on any of those letters that I disagreed with. I think that, that what we looked at, when we looked at every one of them, was to see, how can we do all of the things that we're trying to do, listen to as, as all of the people that are providing input? And I think when I looked at those letters, I would probably say that 90%, and this is anecdotal, 90% of the comments that were made, we tried to preserve that in this particular recommendation. And we worked to make sure that we could keep the staff together, the administration together, the students together, the partners together. And all of the great things that are going on right now at Wendell Phillips, we're able to keep together as a unit, lift it, and literally put it in a different building. And the, the idea that the neighborhood, the, the buildings are four blocks apart. We've talked about, we, we talked about, how do we keep the neighborhood together? How, and we found that, I think as Shannon indicated earlier, both buildings, Attics and Phillips building, both are located within the same new revised boundary. So the numbers that we're talking about, it's whether or not the children are located in the Phillips building, or whether the same children are located in the Attics building. It doesn't change the demographics at all based upon what the boundaries were, were altered. So our goal was not to create an environment that we would use a, a different building code. We're going to use the, the Phillips building code. We'll use the Phillips data. We'll use everything by just lifting and putting it into a different facility. And, and that's what I believe we've attempted to do by addressing each of those, or 90% of the comments that were made, by doing that and keeping that family, that family feeling, that culture together. It's just in a different location.
Um, so to recap, just to be sure, we are saying that we are keeping everything about Phillips as a school the same, but moving it to a new building. Is, is that what we're saying? And we're maintaining the, the school's current test scores, accreditation status and all that.
That's correct. When you say everything, I want to say everything. There could be something, but that's the intent.
When, so when we look at what MGT provided us when they did the, the, the building scores, I mean, it was very clear that the building at Wendell Phillips scored particularly low. Are we, are we, are, are we suggesting the move, are we, I guess, are the issues at that building, are they simple, like electrical HVAC? Are we talking like environmental issues in that building? Like, do we have, you know, I guess that's what I'm, yeah, like, you know, there are environmental justice issues that you have to worry about when you're talking about keeping kids in a school building that we identify as being a poor performing building.
I can try to address some of the facility issues. We, as you know, we've been doing surveys for the last two, three years in our buildings. And we've, we've been looking at HVAC, building exteriors, all the major components of the building. Wendell Phillips is, is 58 years older than Attics. So just from that basis alone, there's quite a bit of difference. I, I can get you the, you know, the details on that.
I, I was just interested in, like, the, the low bill, you know, the low building score that it got as like the actual structural building. If, if we, there's, there, I guess there's no way to, I guess, adequately repair that building and that Attics makes, moving that program to a newer, better facility.
If you, if you look strictly at the heating and air conditioning system, you know, we have estimates of, of $2 million to, to bring Phillips up to probably where it should be. It, it has window units, where Attics has a, has a very modern system.
I'm going to jump in on this because I actually attended, well, now, I attended this public forum and I asked these specific questions of MGT and of our administrative team. And these assessments of these score buildings had changed several times during the first round of sessions, and they were not assessed by, am I on? They were not assessed by the detailed composition that was done in 2010 when we closed and did the right sizing. So this is not what you were asking as far as asbestos pieces, that very specific detail? There was just more like a walkthrough of what, like Mr. Davis said, about what is needing to be put in, which you have this report in the back of your binder, what amount of money that they want to project to put into updating the building. But as far as a baseline comparison to what was done specifically in 2010, these, these scores are not as specific as the detailed component of an outside company doing the assessment on these buildings. So when I look at these scores from MGT, I don't really consider them into consideration that much because I asked those specific questions and they were not, it was just MTG running through and they're just a contracted company. They're not an assessor of buildings and asbestos and lead removal and abatement and havoc and how much energy and air and energies put in, put out by lights and all that other components that was done in 2010. And they did not run that comparison against this. So these weighted detail scores are not, to me, in my opinion, very accurate.
So let me go ahead and just say a couple of things quickly. First of all, it is not acceptable to cut off your colleagues. Mr. Oats was, was asking a question. You're cutting up, don't cut me off now. It was not acceptable to cut off your colleague in the middle of a question. Let him ask his own questions. If you want to ask that question, we can come back around to you. But we're not going to get up here and start cutting each other off. So Mr. Oats, please continue.
It, it wasn't a cutting off of question. It was having a discussion with my fellow board member into an open public meeting of what, what we're supposed to be talking about and having dialogues. And it was not, I was not trying to cut him off. So if you feel that I'm cutting you off, Mr. Oats, I apologize for that. But I want to keep this as an open, public conversation that we are supposed to be answering to our taxpayers and our community and our parents.
Mr. Oats, please continue.
Um, so on page 33, on the middle school slide, I see that, you know, we're talking about possibly expla, expanding Lincoln Middle. Was that page 33? Yes. That we're, we're talking about possibly expanding Lincoln Middle and also creating a third southern boundary elementary, or middle school. I see those ideas as like diametrically opposed to each other when we talk about like density and, and issues like that. You know, there's, there's definitely no debating that the program at Lincoln will, you know, if we have available seats, we'll have people ready to fill those. So would, would we in essence just be siphoning off any support that we had for a southern middle school by expanding that program in any form?
And I think those are things we have to look at within the context of one another. You know, there, even in our advisory, Lincoln Middle School Advisory Committee discussions, there were concerns about the impact that a Lincoln expansion would have on other elementary schools, since it has, it starts at sixth grade, but also our middle and high schools. So those are things that we're, they're not looking at them, you know, in a box. We're, we're trying to look at them factoring in that there's, there is interest at Lincoln to expand that. There's interest in the southern portion of the boundary. And so we'll have to reconcile those. One thing with Lincoln, that, that school right now is above its desired utilization. We don't have that anywhere else, I think. And so that's, that's creating some stresses on the functionality of that building and the experience for those students. So that's something that we, we have, have to continue to look at.
On the, the slide where we talked about kids who are, are students, excuse me, who are currently in a school building where, let's say, the boundary change now puts them outside the building, but they'd like to continue. One, one, I guess, question or concern I have is if that child is there, but for example, if that family has another child, let's say, who's kinder, you know, who's, who'll be entering kindergarten, will they have, you know, is there a chance, like a sibling clause that we're looking at, or will that new kindergartner, would that family have to split their kids, I guess?
What we, I'll defer to that.
Well, I, you know, I think that the intent is if you're at the, the sixth or the, the eighth or the 11th, maybe at the right grades rate, that that's where transportation would be provided. Any sibling, we would look to board policy. And, and board policy basically allows that to occur with their own transportation. And so I think we would, because the, the problem we would, we would have to deal with is what happens then the next year. So I think we would, we would look at providing the transportation to those students that would be eligible and then operating the siblings through board policy.
Then just one more question and one comment, I guess. We, we talked about that Wendell Phillips at Attics would assume the Wendell Phillips test scores, just thinking about Hartman. So we're, we're shifting a lot of kids out and we're shifting, you know, we're bringing a lot of kids in. What, what is our expectation, I guess, as far as this, you know, Desi and the state's concerned? Is what, what, what building scores survive, I guess, that merger?
And again, in the conversation that we've had with, with the department, we focused the, the primary discussion on Phillips and, and Attics. But if you carried that through, we would use the same test. And again, we have that, the, the larger percentage of students that would remain. And so we would remain using the Hartman scores.
Then I guess my last comment is, is it the plan to, I, I assume this, this presentation's online?
It will be tomorrow morning.
It will be tomorrow morning. Anything about the backup data, is that just for us, I guess? I mean, I know that, just, I'm, I'm looking at it, it'd be a lot of data. I just didn't know.
So a, a lot of those data pieces have been provided previously as attachments to previous presentations, because all of those are up. But, I mean, we can, we can work to scan them all and put them into an easy way for people to digest that. And I, I did want to follow up on one thing that you were both talking about with the facility condition of Phillips and others. So MGT did a desk audit based off of the assessments that Darrell's team, he's contracted out and had people look at roofs and HVAC and building envelope. Say, they took a look at all of those, then also worked with our building teams to say, okay, well, we haven't done assessments on flooring and, but they, they went through. So you're right, not, everything is exactly the way that it was back in 2006 when they did a full assessment. But that information was based off of recent analysis. And Ms. Montero did ask in the last couple of days for some additional clarification around building costs, utility costs. And so we're still gathering that. And we'll have that available to the board in a board packet.
Yes, I have a few questions. I got so busy listening to some. I have to think now for a minute for my question.
I wish I could say I had a whole bunch of questions, but I don't. But I would like to say that this is an incredibly difficult process. I mean, this is hard. This is probably one of the hardest board meetings I've ever been to, and I've been to all of them. And I'm hoping that something came out of this, not just for the board, but also for the community. There are no one that, there's no one that should be left out. You know, that includes all stakeholders, the community, the parents, the teachers, the staff, the board, you name it, the business community. We should all be responsible for making this thing work, because the board cannot do it by itself, nor can the community. And when you think about closing of schools, you could close a school in Kansas that belonged to the district, and you're going to get some kickback. I can't think of any school out there that we could shut down that would not cause us concern. So unfortunately, we have to do the best for everybody, and I'm hoping that we can make this work and not be enemies when we walk out of here.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry. I had a few questions just about the timeline. If I recall, when we had our consult originally brought in about the closing of schools, at that time, when they had assessed the usage of the building and the state of the building, Wendell Phillips was not considered to be on the list. At the time when they brought back the recommendation, first to us, we did not have a recommendation that Wendell Phillips was endangering our students by the building, or did we?
So...
Wait, let me just finish with that.
Oh, okay.
So I guess part of my concern is that until we got the kickback that Addicts was not going to be appropriate for whatever reason, then our rationale has now become the physical condition of Phillips. That's just concerning to me that we had not acknowledged that at some point before, and continuing with the timeline is disconcerting, is that if we started meetings in January, today's February tenth. What we're talking, I find it difficult to understand our movement, and then we already have a follow-up plan for the repurposing of it. It seems that what is moving most of this is our relationship with UNI. I mean, it's just, it's appearing, maybe I will also give me clarification.
I would just have to respectfully disagree, and I understand, we've heard that from a lot of people, but we heard that also at Addicts. We have, we know what the U and I boundary is. We looked at every school within that boundary and whether or not that was a viable location for that partnership if we were to pursue it. Addicts, Phillips, Faxon, Franklin, KCMSA, because King wasn't in it at the time, we looked at all of them. And so we heard those same concerns, that we were making closure recommendation decisions around what's best for you and I. I'm not going to be able to convince anyone that that's not the overwhelming factor.
My question, my question is that Wendell Phillips wasn't on the table.
Well, which is not actually correct. So if we go back, and I can share this with the board, if we go back to the MGT presentations, I think it was January of 2015, they looked at, they had laid out Phillips or Addicts, and I think it might have said Wheatley as well. So I can't remember, because there are times that maybe for one presentation it didn't say Wheatley, and others that it did. So that was always discussed in the, so over a year ago, that was discussed. When they came back with their final recommendations in April, they were, I don't want to say it, I don't know if I'm supposed to, they were asked not to present recommendations on a particular school site closure. So their recommendations in April were to, around the range of school, number of schools to close. So it was three to four elementary, one to two high school. So we discussed this at the meeting with Wendell Phillips staff and community members and parents, and, you know, a couple weeks ago. And, you know, I get that, that doesn't matter to folks at this point in time, because it's real now, but that's a group of schools that we have always looked at because they are so close to one another. I'll try to get back to a map. We have a grouping of elementary schools, I mean, not all on here, but within this area. So Longfellow, Faxon, Addicts, Phillips, Wheatley, Garcia, all of those are undersized. Our major challenge is Phillips, Addicts, and Wheatley are four and six blocks apart from one another respectively, almost like at the same, is that longitude, latitude, block, whatever. We have not been able to figure out, how could you draw an attendance boundary for all three of those schools and get those schools to those recommended school size ranges so we are adequately supporting all of those schools? Can't do it.
Okay, let me just go back then to the document I'm looking at. I'm going to your October master plan. And I guess, I understand about discussions, but I'm trying to see what we've been putting out, and when I see about school closings in your October, you only identify central page, and then when you go to your comprehensive piece of property recommendations, page seventy-three, I mean, I just can't see if we're in October, when we were standing to look at and study your master plan.
Right.
There was nothing here.
You're right, the draft recommendations that we made in November
Right.
were closure of Addicts, closure of Addicts, closure of Page, closure of Southwest. So, you know, and there, we shared the rationale, there's, under your green tab, there's two slides, one that shows closure criteria that were evaluated at the high school level and one at the elementary level. And I'll tell you, our team has sat down, you can look at this a variety of ways, and all I can say is we were asked by the community to take a second look at our recommendations, reassess, and that's what we've done and provided you with those revised recommendations, and...
I think, Dr. Hartsfield, I think that in November, when we made the recommendation, we made the recommendation to close Addicts, that was the recommendation. I think that what has happened in the last three and a half months through that community engagement was a request that we actually take another look. And I think we heard it not just once, we heard it in a variety of different forums, and so that is exactly what we did. And when we incorporated what we could do, because what DESI would allow us to do after we looked at it, by keeping everything together, then it started to make a little bit more sense in terms of what we were able to do, being responsive to our community through the community engagement process to implement a change that we really believe will end up ultimately benefiting the district and all of our students as a whole. So it really was an outcome of the community engagement process that allowed us to take another look, or, and maybe not allowed us, forced us to take another look, and investigate other options that we did, and we did that with the department.
All right. Don't clap. Why don't we just close Addicts like the original plan was, and just leave Wendell Phillips alone?
I think that certainly, that's a possibility, that's an option. It was the one that we originally brought to the board in November, and one that we certainly could do. The reason that we looked to make the change was primarily facility-driven. It was based upon the expense, we've got an estimate right now of what it would take to bring Phillips up to where we need to, what it would cost to bring Addicts up, and there's about a three million dollar spread between the two facilities. And so I think it's, and then once it's brought up, we still have some deficiencies within that facility that aren't, that we don't believe could serve children as well. But is that possible? Absolutely, it's possible, we can do that. But I think after the community asked us to take a look at it, we did. We found a way to make it work and keep the staff, the students, the community together, and that's what resulted in a revised recommendation. But the answer to your question is, we can.
Okay, and that's what I was curious about. So if I'm understanding this, ultimately, both the previous recommendation and the current recommendation are essentially to displace the current community at Addicts. One of them would likely be with a charter that the district sponsors, one of them would likely be with another district school that's currently located elsewhere. The difference between those two decisions is about a two million dollar hit, and so three million dollar hit. So we leave these folks in place, that means we have to spend the money to fix up their building, which presumably means some other repairs get pushed a little bit farther down the line somewhere else. But is that like the major, because we go pass the hat and we ain't going to come up with three million dollars, so it's nothing to sneeze at, but is that the major kind of differentiator between these two options?
I would say the other component of that would be the size of the building, because Addicts is a larger building.
It has more classrooms, it's square footage is small, is actually a little bit smaller, but it has more classrooms.
Yeah, a question here, another question I have.
Just a second, so Mr. West, you down?
Well, I have two things I want to bring up. One, I know that we have invested in schools before, because I know, Hell Cook, we invested, what, two million? And I think we had about ninety students there, so I would like to see if there's students who are going to be there, that we do still invest to bring up to par, but my colleague brought up another question, is that at Addicts, we do have a special population that has special needs, and so therefore we can't necessarily just close that building for them, but, you know, this whole school in the school thing is quite interesting. Maybe that might be where UNI might want to be, it might want to be a school in a school with Addicts. We have to keep, we have to keep that population with what it needs to do, but I'm saying, if you're all saying school in the school is such a good thing, well, I'm just saying, if you want to, since it's a test model anyway, test model it there with UNI and fix up the building of Wendell Phillips.
I do want to ask a clarifying question around Dr. Hartsfield's point. So UNI is planning to open next fall.
They would like to.
How many classrooms?
Six. Six, I think.
Six plus two pre-K.
Six plus two pre-K.
And then their plan would be to add, you might not know this, how many sections per year?
Two.
Okay, thank you.
Worked very well.
Ms. Montero, please.
Okay, so I think Dr. Hartsfield brings up a very good point, and so does Ms. Manser, about our special ed population that maybe some people aren't aware of at Addicts. It's a one-building floor, and the prior proposal was to move the Addicts special ed, which was about three hundred of them, to Garcia, two hundred?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two to Garcia.
Okay, okay. All right, okay, because at the last meeting, that's what we heard at the Addicts meeting, was two hundred, three hundred. So, and the issue with parents not having transportation, and that was directly on the bus line, and the investment being made on truce with the new police station. So that was concerns for parents being moved across town with their special ed children, and that was a very viable point, because, and keeping the teachers, the special ed teachers with their children and what they've already established, especially with children with autism and other needs that need specific regiment and routine in their lives. So, Dr. Hartsfield, I think that was a great idea. Maybe we should just keep digging into more data, because this is very difficult when looking at, if you're just looking at building statistics, if you're just looking at not all the figure cost, if you're just looking at what, who's accredited, not accredited, who's got the scores, better scores or lower scores. But in all point, I think Mr. Evans made the point that we're talking about all of our children, and we need to take care of each other. And that's definitely in the piece where we need to take care of KCPS first before we venture out into the charter sponsorship.
I just have to say this, I am at somewhat of a quandary right now, and I respect everything that was said here tonight, you know, but when Addicts parents come down, are we going to facilitate? And when you, that community out there is just as strong as the Phillips community, and I see us having to go through this again with their parents, and I hope whatever decision we make, we will stand fast on that decision and not go back and forth, just because you have a strong component of people from both communities.
I believe the questions are answered. Is there anything further? All right, thank you very much, this concludes, Mr. West.
No, two entirely separate things. First thing, what's the timeline on approval of this?
Well, I think obviously we need to regroup a little bit, which is what we had intended to do after we had the meeting this evening. We may have some additional questions to direct to the board for clarification, and if we can, we would be back at our next board meeting, this will be a topic in two weeks, right.
And then the other thing I want to say, I say this a lot when folks show up, so it's not, you know, total pandering, because I may well fall on the Addicts, you relocate the Addicts side of this, I mean, I've just been presented with this this evening, so I've got the data, so I've got more to think through. But I do want to say, I really, really, really value the community that you've built at Wendell Phillips, not only the work you do for our children, but you're coming out this evening and sticking through extra innings of board meetings, so thank you for being here.